For public participation at the Marsack Municipal Building, Council Chambers 445 Marsack Avenue, Park City, Utah 84060 on Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. Planning Commission members may participate in person or connect electronically by Zoom or phone. Members of the public may attend in person or participate electronically. Public comments will also be accepted virtually. To comment virtually, use eComment or raise your hand on Zoom through www.parkcity.org-publicmeetings. Written comments submitted before or during the meeting will be entered into the public record, but will not be read aloud. For more information on attending virtually and to listen live, please go to www.parkcity.org. All right, welcome, everyone. Let's see, roll call. We do not have Commissioner Van Dine with us, but we do have the rest of the sitting commissioners. This is the first meeting. We do not have Commissioner Tim with us, so there's just six of us. And five of us attending tonight. We have Commissioner Sousa who is attending virtually. And everyone else is here. Next on the agenda, we have minutes of approval. Consideration to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from May 11th, 2022. Do any commissioners have any corrections or additions to make to the minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Chair Phillips, I move to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from May 11th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Johnson, a second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is public communications. If there's anyone from the public wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, you could step up to the podium or raise your hand in Zoom. Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll continue into staff and board communications and disclosures. Gretchen?
Yes, Chair Phillips and commissioners. We usually, we plan all of the planning meetings for the year in the beginning of the year, and so they're all set. Last year, we took a pause in August, together with, sort of coordinated with city councils so that we didn't have any planning commission meetings in August. Unfortunately, we've already sort of missed that boat since our August meetings are more or less filled up. So what we're proposing though, so that we get ahead of the game, is there's a couple meetings. There's a meeting on November 23rd, the day before Thanksgiving, that we thought we might want to cancel. And there is a meeting December 28th, that is, three days after Christmas, we thought we might want to cancel as well. And so I just wanted to get the approval from the commissioners that that was okay with you all, and we could cancel those planning commission meetings.
So move.
Yes, please.
Okay, anything else? All right. I have one disclosure, and that is that I will be recusing myself from item 5D on the agenda due to my involvement on that application. And that's all I have. Any commissioners have anything else?
I was in leadership with John Sale. I consider him to be a friend of mine, and that will not influence my decision here tonight.
Okay.
We agreed a while ago that we were going to do 9:30 cutoff. I know we didn't do that the last meeting, but I really do need to do that this meeting. So I will have to be leaving, so we will not have quorum after.
Okay.
If you and I both leave for the last item, so in terms of staying on timeframe.
Okay, nope, that's very reasonable, and I apologize. I need to work more on keeping us on time. It's hard, but yes, yes. And yes, and so there will only be four, and so that is the hard cutoff at 9:30. So there's no doubt about that tonight. All right, anything else, commissioners? All right. Then we will move into our regular agenda item. 5A, and this is the appeal of the administrative conditional use permit for the lift upgrades. Let's see here.
I think I'll go first. Mark Arrington, senior city attorney. Appeals are a little tricky, and so I'm going to give you just a brief introduction. Planning Commission does not handle very many appeals, and, but they're, to the degree that this is a conditional use appeal, it is not very different from what the planning commission hears most meetings, because the review criteria and the standard, the code is the same as any conditional use permit, with the addition of some criteria in the development agreement. So in that respect, you know, you should be in very familiar territory. But just the general rules, this is what's called a de novo review. That means a new, you don't have to give staff's findings any deference. That means if John wants the old math instead of Gretchen's new math and carrying the pens and whatever, you can do it that way, reach your own fact conclusions. You are limited to the scope of the appeal, however, in the issues raised on appeal by the appellant's, unless you vote to expand the scope of the appeal. And you apply what's called a corrected standard. You have to determine whether the planning director correctly applied the land management code to the facts of the application. And all that really means is that you're sort of early training, right? We like the word because. I find that this application does or does not comply with this standard because, and then you cite something on the record. Same thing on appeal. You're saying planning director was or was not correct because they either erred this way or they did not err because they appropriately applied such and such to such and such. You're going to hear kind of three variations of arguments. The appellant's at a high level will make their case. The planning director will describe her decision, and then the applicant will describe why they think the staff made the right decision. Then you will take a public hearing. Park City is unique in affording the public hearings during appeals. Almost no other jurisdiction does that. City council chose to do that affirmatively, to be transparent and be inclusive, and give a last opportunity for the decision maker to get the best possible information to make a decision. That said, public, that does not mean you can say pro or for or against with no reason to be effective. The same rules apply. If you want to be, give effective public testimony, this is, you know, it should be, this application does or does not comply with the code because, we like the word because. Or I agree with the appellant's because, or I agree with staff because, or I agree with the applicant. Those are helpful comments. Comments about Vale's operations or things that have nothing to do with this application aren't helpful for these guys to make a defensible decision. And that's ultimately what you want to contribute towards. State law has required us to administer conditional use permits, whether they're administrative or full, with one very clear line. State says, "A land use authority shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards." That's what a conditional use is in the state of Utah. It's not discretionary. It's not, you may or may not. If you're going to deny it, you have to say you can't find those conditions that mitigate the proposed use. The other reason appeals are a little tricky are because oftentimes we have lawyers and advocates making the case. And a lot of times lawyers advise our clients to be cautious of litigation and particularly appeals, because the outcome's a little more uncertain, because sometimes those that are most persuasive get, can impact the result. The good news is, as far as I understand today, is most of the arguments today will not be by lawyers. I think you're going to hear from the appellant's directly, and the applicant directly, and Gretchen directly. And so, you know, wow. So I think that's a good thing, that you guys can roll up your sleeves, get to the meat of the matter, and hear directly what the issues are and aren't. It may not be, you know, with fiery inspiration or convincibility, but I think you're just going to get to the meat of the matter. And people are going to argue, this is what we think it says, and this is why we think it's right or wrong. And you guys get to decide that issue, and I think that's the beauty of the planning commission role. And so I think as long as you keep people on track with that, and I think no matter what your decision is, you can go home tonight feeling, you know, you appropriately represented Park City and the citizens. If you have any questions on those items, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, I think we'll turn it over to Gretchen for a brief, or I guess we're going to do disclosures, and then to Gretchen for a brief introduction, and then the appellant's.
Okay, yeah, and just real quick, just to kind of frame the discussions in a timeframe. We anticipate the introduction, which we'll get right now, about five minutes. And then the appellant's presentation, we've allotted 30 minutes for that. Then we have the planning director's opportunity to respond, 15 minutes. And then 15 minutes for Park City Mountain Resort for a response, and also any planning commissioner questions, and then we will open the public hearing. After that, you know, the parties may reserve opportunity to respond, and then we will deliberate and have some possible actions tonight. So that's what we can expect. We have 90 minutes allotted for this item, and so we're going to do my best to try to keep us on that so we can get through the rest of our review. With that, the introductions.
Sorry, just any disclosures that need to be made from the commissioners?
Yeah, any disclosures on this particular item, commissioners?
Okay, good evening, commissioners. So as we've mentioned, I will be starting tonight's appeal process by giving you a brief overview of the lift upgrade application, the appeal, and a short summation. So the lifts that we are talking about are, that are part of the application, are located on Park City Mountain, which is zoned recreational open space, and is also within the sensitive lands overlay. I believe most of you are very familiar with the location of the lifts that are being upgraded, with the legal, with the Eagle Lift, starting right from the base area, connecting with the Eaglelet just above, and the Silverload servicing many of the trails on the western side of the mountain. The lift upgrade application was reviewed by planning staff and then received my approval as the planning director during an administrative public hearing on April 25th of this year, 2022. This decision was appealed to the planning commission on May 5th, 2022, and is being heard here tonight. So just to set the record straight, lift upgrades normally would require a conditional use permit, which is reviewed by the planning commission per Land Management Code 15-4-18. However, Section 2.3 of the 1998 Park City Mountain Development Agreement, which is between the city and what was the then owner of the resort, which stays with the resort, states that lift upgrades be reviewed administratively by staff if they meet the six criteria outlined in the agreement. Right now, I'm not planning to go through the six criteria, mainly for time, but more importantly, the appellant makes 11 arguments, and in those 11 arguments, they really are only addressing criteria one, which is consistency with the mountain upgrade plan, and criteria six, which is adequate parking mitigation. So a little summation here. Criteria one, which is compliance with the development agreement. Again, Section 2.3 clearly states that the development of ski-related facilities, so in this case, that would be the lift upgrades, are subject to staff-level review, and therefore it supersedes the Land Management Code's conditional use requirement for planning commission review. And based on this information, this application was processed as an administrative conditional use permit, and per the Land Management Code 15-1-11D, the planning director, myself, shall review and approve or deny the application. Furthermore, we had planning staff thoroughly review the application and found it complied with the development agreement, in that it met the six criteria that are outlined in the development agreement. It was consistent with the mountain upgrade plan, which is a part of the development agreement, that it complied with the Land Management Code, and that it was also aligned with the general plan. In addition to this, we also procured a third-party consultant to conduct additional review of some of the more technical aspects of the application, namely the analysis of the comfortable carrying capacity, which I know you've all heard quite a bit about with other applications. And that review concluded that there were minimal impacts or new parking demand resulting from the proposed lift upgrades, and that the lift upgrades were not exceeding the maximum allowed CCCs of 13,700. So the other criteria, criteria six, which is parking mitigation. This criteria requires assurance that there is adequate parking to mitigate the impact of any proposed expansion of lift capacity. And that's lift capacity, so that's not full mitigation of all resort parking issues. In addition, the application is required to submit an updated parking mitigation plan. And while the criteria focuses mainly on the mitigation related to the expansion of the lift capacity, we saw an opportunity with the requirement of an updated parking plan to address some of the other parking issues and actually press the applicant to deliver a more transformative mitigation plan. So the parking mitigation plan is up and beyond what would be required to mitigate for the lift capacity. The parking mitigation, the proposed mark parking mitigation plan that was submitted proposes paid parking and a reservation system, along with a robust communication system as well. It, that paid parking and reservations, the data shows that there would be a 11% reduction of parking demand with that system in place. And that's looking at data from other ski resorts that have done similar mitigation. It also adds 90 additional off-site employee parking spots that would be at the munchkin lot. And it also has secured overflow parking at the Park City High School on weekends with a lease agreement for the 2022-2023 season. And again, we also have the assurance from our third-party consultant that there are minimal impacts or new parking demand resulting from the proposed lift upgrades, and that they're not exceeding that maximum allowance of comfortable carrying capacity. And I think I'll stop there. I think we're going to cover the rest of the stuff in our presentation following the appellate.
Okay. Then I'll turn to the applicant or the appellant. I'm not sure what the proper term is, but go ahead, mister.
I'm not a lawyer, that means.
Welcome.
Can I share my screen? Can you see me?
Not yet, but we'll let you know when you see it.
Okay. It's sort of encouraging that the lawyer in the room is encouraged that we're not lawyers. I'm online, so.
Not seen it quite yet, so let's, we'll get that taken care of.
Clive Bush.
Yeah, I saw him, let's see.
Is there a lot of people online?
Just need to promote you over.
Okay.
We do have 72 people attending online, just so.
And I am a Zoom novice, so bear with me. I guess I should, I'm muted, so that's good. How's that?
There we go.
We're up and running?
Yep.
Great. Let me just. So before I start, I'll do away the niceties. I know time is of essence. I'm just going to do a little five-minute opening before I pass over to Angela Mosketa, who's going to do the hard-hitting piece with all the numbers. And then we would like to reserve time after the public input for redress, and I think there was a spot in the agenda for doing that.
Yes.
Okay. So I put this statement up for everyone to see. It's one that we see all the time, particularly from Vale. And I just wonder, when you see this statement, do you ever ask yourself what caused the poor experience in the first place? Has it always been this way? And are we here to improve skier experience, or are we simply making way for more skiers with lift upgrades? How does making things faster and wider defy the logical conclusion that it simply creates more space for more people? How does geographically unrestrained and unlimited season pass sales that weren't invented when the mounting upgrade plan was? But how do they impact the applicant's intention versus the actual outcome? Is adding lift capacity really any different than adding an extra driving lane to the highway? And we all know where that leads us. We actually have some insight into this with the upgrade of Motherlode and King Kong, approved with a very similar ACUP in 2015. In this approval process, at the same time as Motherlode and King Kong, Quicksilver Connect went in and Miners Camp was put in. There was some giddiness around town that we were getting all of these new lifts. It was $50 million being spent, but there was also some concern. So while we were being reportedly advertised, marketed as the biggest ski resort in America, there was also this niggling concern, not unlike what we have today. In addition to the two upgrades, as I said, Quicksilver Miners Camp went through the commission, the two upgrades went through the ACUP process. SE Group, the same consultant the applicant uses today, responded to this concern with this letter. And in red, we can see they say that these upgrades to Motherlode and King Kong make those lifts more popular. Not spoken of in this application. Not popular in the sense that they're going to drag more people in, but in the sense that it's going to improve skier circulation and skier distribution throughout the mountain, that in turn would reduce repeat skiers on Silverload by as much as 25%. Everyone's concern was eased. No mention of popularity creating new demand, and yet here we are today debating the upgrade to Silverload to improve guest experience and reduce crowding. What happened? Should that have happened? Why did the experts continually wash, why do they continually wash their hands of these consequences as they do here? And why, and perhaps more importantly, why does City Hall let them get away with it? If we've learned anything from these administrative approvals, it's that they ignore real impacts. Crazy as that seems, they purposefully hide behind well-crafted statements such as, "The CCC has no bearing on actual visitations." This evades common sense and logic. They ultimately let everyone down, both on and off the mountain. They leave behind a wake of destructive impacts in the community with no guaranteed impact resolution without a foretelling of what they might be. And that is critical to the conditions that company has drafted are worthless. It's farcical that city staff continually adjudicates theory while casting aside the cause and effects, which is what they do. And they have done again here. It's irresponsible, it's careless, and entirely inconsistent with the rules, and undeniably destructive to the community. I think I got the audio off. Oh, okay, it's all right. Could be on IT person. Is that it? Thank you. And now, believing there might actually be genuine concern for consistency from the commission, we should look at two things. First, we saw in the staff report that the Crescent Upgrade on the left here went through the commission because it was a new lift. Well, in fact, it replaced the Ski Team Lift. You can see that went here. It went up a bit further, and it went down a little bit further. Here, we're reviewing significantly more changes with an ACPU review, so we're completely inconsistent with that past decision. I don't know why that decision was made then. We don't really know why a decision was made today, although we've heard from the planning director. But that is clearly inconsistent in my eyes. And then we need to talk about inconsistent with the mountain upgrade plan. On the left is the mounting upgrade plan, which says they were going, we were going to put a chandler in. A chandler means a mix of chairs and gondolas, which went all the way up to the meadow, and Three Kings was going to go away. Since the mounting upgrade plan was put in, Three Kings got upgraded somehow. Again, we don't know how or why. And on the right is the current application, which is the New Eagle Lift, which goes to a completely different ski pod than the Chandler. That changes the distribution of skiers from what's in the mounting upgrade plan. It changes the terrain, it changes the skill level of terrain it goes to. And we eliminate, we leave Three Kings in place, and we eliminate Eagle and Eaglelet. This also removes another intent of the mountain upgrade plan that was direct access to a proposed beginner area up here on the meadow. That was one of the targets of the mounting upgrade plan, was to increase beginner and novice area. That it no longer seems feasible once you put this new eagle in. The second thing is, is the chandler, the concept of the chandler is there will be gondolas so people could egress the mountain easily on foot, whether they're beginners, like they do at Canyon, some of the gondola, and probably like they used to do here, I don't know, on the gondola, but also for summer activity. So you can see, when we talk about consistency, it's more than just CCC. These are inconsistencies that are significant and need to be adjudicated by the planning commission. Thank you, and I'm going to pass to Angela. If you can lead me up here, that'd be great.
Hello. Our submission contains 11 unique points of appeal. While some rely on the same or similar support documents and/or reasoning, they are nuanced. And so 30 total minutes to make what should amount to an exhaustive legal argument hardly seems enough. Thank you nevertheless for the opportunity to hear part of our appeal. I'll remind that your role as commissioners is to be the line of defense between profit-minded developers and Park City residents' quality of life. The code and the rules it references are the clear standards by which you must abide. And where our planning department, planning director, and city attorney may fail, you are obligated not to mitigate their own errors in application and judgment by way of hasty conditioning today. Rather, you are duty-bound to restore process and scrutinize plans and to uphold code, prior agreements, and the law. We trust you will not be pressured by Vale's timelines, financial schedules, false promises, or the literal tons of excavation equipment they've been staging at the site since the day the ACUP was granted, April 25th, and have ready to go for tomorrow morning, presuming a denial of our appeal today. Also worth mentioning is the fact that Vale violated Also worth mentioning is the fact that Vail violated a procedural request made May 12, 2022, in which Planning Director stated that neither side, applicant nor appellant, should engage the Planning Commissioners in advance of this hearing. But Vail sent two memos on May 23, both addressed to members of Park City Planning Commission. One is Exhibit 8, an eight-page memo titled Parking Mitigation Plan for PL 2205145. The other is Exhibit 10, a seven-page memo titled VRPC Holdings Inc.'s Response to Appellants' Appeal Submission. In light of the complexity of our appeal and the two written communications to Planning Commission, Vail was allowed. We expect a little latitude from commission, staff, and the applicant today if the worst we do is go over on time. The following is excerpted from summary section of the staff report dated for today, June 8. Quote, "The appellant argues that the Planning Director did not have authority to review the ACUP and that the 1998 Park City Mountain Development Agreement criteria, specifically parking requirements for ski lift upgrades within the mountain upgrade plan, were not met, mitigated, or properly conditioned. Part of the appellant's argument also centers around the capacity of a peak ski day. Peak ski day is not defined in either the DA or the MUP. And the purpose of the MUP, or Mountain Upgrade Plan, is to develop a long-range plan for upgrading the ski area facilities, not to impose new parking, water, or sewer requirements. Furthermore, the DA does not discuss parking requirements for a peak ski day as purported." End of excerpts. We have no time today to get into the important differences between the mountain upgrade plan versus the mountain upgrading plan, which is specifically supposed to be dynamic in accordance with market demand, which we know has increased significantly. For now, the issue is this. You are at least cursorily familiar with comfortable carrying capacities or CCCs. This metric is the entire foundation for calculating a peak ski day. Page 35 of the MUP states unequivocally, quote, "Parking/shuttle accommodations and water and sewer systems must be sized for the capacity of a peak ski day," end quote. Any staff report claims that water and sewer systems have been judiciously determined to require no updating are purely fiction. Staff report and applicant response to our appeal also claim there is no significant increase in the CCCs, therefore there is no increased parking demand. Not only is there no evidence of legitimate address of water and sewer, we actually will show it's not possible to understand scaled requirements for water, sewer, or parking because staff simply doesn't understand the CCCs, which is immediately evident. CCCs are so heavily referenced, revered, and relied upon throughout Planning Director's approval, applicant's response, and staff reports' defense of the ACUP. And peak ski day, again, is just a factor of CCCs. So to simultaneously root all reasoning for why parking demand doesn't increase the CCCs and say that peak ski day should have no bearing within the context of potential impacts and mitigations isn't just unprofessional and lazy, it's contradictory, and it makes no sense. And as for the "as purported," we are not questionably or speciously purporting anything. Everyone living in communities dealing with explosive resort development and the impacts of explosive task sales can reasonably conclude skier numbers, peak ski day limits, and parking requirements are and ought to be inextricably linked. The only people who disagree are directly employed by Vail, working for nonprofits funded by Vail, and curiously, some of our city staff. More from the staff report. Quote, "Section 2.3 of the DA specifies that development of the skiing and related facilities identified in the MUP are subject to administrative staff-level review and that the DA supersedes the Park City Land Management Code with respect to the requirement for Planning Commission review and approval of such facilities. The Planning Director has authority to set forth to approve ACUPs," end quote. The deference to the DA is clear, and so is the DA reliance upon the MUP. And what we actually argue is that Planning Director lacks the authority to review or approve this ACUP because Planning Director lacks command of the MUP, specifically its application in the CCCs. Staff report continues, quote, "Furthermore, the city also procured a third-party consultant to conduct an initial review of some of the technical aspects within the application. They indicate that there are minimal impacts or new parking demand resulting from the proposed lift upgrades, further negating some of the appellant's claims," end quote. The consultants are actually wrong too, all of them, and I'll get into that. Staff report continues, quote, "Additionally, the applicant's analysis of increased CCC does not indicate there will be an increase in parking demand associated with the proposed lift upgrades," quote. So staff report just tried to use the DA to disassociate peak ski day numbers from parking requirements, but the applicant clearly ties parking to CCCs here. And all a peak ski day is, is a factor of CCCs. And Planning Director and staff tie these calculations many times too. So let's use empirical evidence as provided at the resort this past year, including near-death parking lot experiences and more time waiting in lift lines than skiing lines many days, and accept what we all know to be true. CCCs ought absolutely inform parking requirements, and parking should be factored at least to some degree for a peak ski day since it indicates maximum capacity of skiers and therefore, as is calculated for other applications, vehicles. This is why all these numbers exist in the first place. Back to the staff report summary, quote, "The maximum allowed CCC is established as 13,700. Currently, the resort has a CCC of 12,570, and the proposed upgrades will increase to 12,860 or by 2.3%, which is well within the scope of the approved MUP. Criteria six of the DA requires assurance that there is adequate parking to mitigate the impact of any proposed expansion of lift capacity. Additionally, the applicant was required to submit an updated parking mitigation plan," end quote. This all assumes a lot of things. One, that the CCCs are accurate. Two, that the parking is already adequate based on accurate understanding of the CCCs. And three, that the PMP is rooted in fact, and so too are its adequate and achievable strategies and commitments. But we all know what they say about assuming. I remind the commissioners once again of your obligation today per the standard of review in the very same staff report. The Planning Commission shall review factual matters de novo without deference to staff determination of factual matters. And I really do hope you take this to heart because we're about to show you how wrong Planning Director, staff, applicant, and even the professional third-party consultants are. Let's move into this PMP. Exhibit L in your packets revised parking mitigation plan for ACUP application, submitted by Vail to staff on April 19, which was actually 14 days after the Planning Director originally deemed the applicant's application complete. And also Exhibit 8, the Parking Mitigation Plan memo dated May 23, 2022, which was nearly a month after the Planning Director granted the ACUP. Vail itself, once again, directly links parking mitigation to the requirements set forth by the MUP as well as to CCCs. So we can deduce that if the CCCs were to change dramatically, so too would the parking requirements. From that May 23 memo, quote, "Section 2.3 requires that at all times the developer shall ensure that it has adequate parking or has implemented such other assurances as provided in the Parking Mitigation Plan to mitigate the impact of any proposed expansion of lift capacity." Note, it doesn't apply time limits or grandfather anything in. It clearly stipulates "at all times" and "the impact of any proposed expansion of lift capacity." It also says "the developer," so Peg should probably make note of the miscalculated mess it too is going to have to address. Tomorrow marks six years to the day that I stood in these very chambers representing the civic engagement initiative I co-founded, Future Park City, specifically to take on Vail. Then I pleaded with Mayor Jack Thomas and council to get serious and strong in the city's response to Vail's attempt to trademark our town name. And I asked Vail to put its intentions in writing and to stop using only the name Park City in its promotions and communications regarding the resort it operates here. While I won some battles on directional signage people see coming into town on 2/24, signage around the resort, and even the letterhead on some of the exhibits in today's packet confirm Vail will keep doing as it wishes at the expense of our residents and small businesses, unless someone's uses the tools available to keep these guys in check. The Planning Commission is a body completely within its right to condition and negotiate in order to defend against Vail's exploitation of this community, and the parasitic development is driving from Mayflower to Main Street, from the Canyons to Kimball Junction. This ski company alone has all but destroyed Park City's local character, accessible charm, and relative affordability, and it has all but ruined skiing for mountain town residents across the country. And despite Mike Gore's well-timed editorial in today's park record in which he states, quote, "Progress requires shared trust and commitment," quote, we believe Vail has to earn the community's trust, and hopefully that happens under Peter Walsh. But for now, we are dealing with an altogether different philosophy that places company before integrity. Case in point, Mr. Gore's performance before city council on February 3, when he claimed skier numbers weren't up, that it just looked that way. Town lift reporter Parker Malatesta used publicly available cellphone data to refute Mr. Gore's bold lies and confirmed visits were up a whopping 11%. You have more than cellphone data to go off, and Gore and Vail deserve zero trust. I will continue. The May 23 memo goes on to discuss implementation of a paid parking strategy, including the need for in-house or contracted staff to manage it. But at what cost? And what effect does this have on net proceeds from paid parking revenues that Planning Director added as a 19th condition of approval to the ACUP? Surely you all readily see how this is meritless and not to be labeled as sufficient or adequate mitigation strategy. Net proceeds without establishment of baseline and projected costs is actually not a mitigation strategy at all. It's just a failed and meaningless negotiation. Vail's memo further states, quote, "PCM has reviewed information provided by other venues that have implemented paid parking, which confirm anecdotally that a reservation-based parking system does drive a significant positive change in guest parking behavior," end quote. Anecdotally, are they serious? Also, where, who, what are these venues? What are the similarities and differences to Park City Mountain Resort Base? What is the support these venues have by way of dedicated off-site parking and efficient public transit? The same memo goes on to say, quote, "Guests who arrive without reservations will be directed to another parking location, such as Canyon's Village, the high school, or a park-and-ride location," end quote. Such as, again, this is not a plan. And what about the fact that Vail remains unable to confirm reliable and the consistent off-site parking alternatives for its increasing numbers of guests? Vail apparently just renewed its parking contract with the high school for a rate of $300 an hour, at a max of 12 hours a day, for a total of $3,600 a day for those who've been interested in this figure. But at this contract, which is Exhibit 6 in your packets, clearly stipulates use of the high school lot cannot exceed eight days in a calendar month, and the slot is only available on weekends and holidays. Based on the schedule confirmed in the contract, this means the high school could theoretically provide overflow parking for 34 days over the ski season. But that's only assuming those days are spread evenly across December to early April and that they only occur on weekends and holidays. We know for certain that PCMR law treats capacity 68 days last year. This figure is likely higher, but the city, not even Vail, who has refused any responsibility in messaging to guests, the city stopped sending text alerts mid-season. Furthermore, overflow is not limited to weekends and school holidays, and that's where those park-and-ride locations, surely you all remember when County Transportation Director Carolyn Rodriguez came before this commission and confirmed the fallacy that was and is Vail's reliance on satellite locks for their guests to take buses home. Vail's paid parking system, it says, will be managed by a third party contracted through PCM. I really wish we had time today to delve into what real conditions that are measurable, meaningful, and enforceable look like. We will present our ideas on these in detail at a future meeting when you approve our appeal today and bring the lift upgrade plan back before this commission for scrutiny review. For now, Vail continues in the memo anecdotally, quote, "Implementing a paid and reserved system at PCM is likely to encourage day skiers to change," end quote. Likely as sufficient as applies to precip and weather forecasts, not as it applies to mitigating and conditioning land use decisions. Vail relies on Fair and Peers, quote, "Fair and Peers used a proprietary model based on a meta-analysis of 50 different parking studies. The existing parking supply and observed average parking demand from the 2021 to 2022 ski season was analyzed, relying on price sensitivities for different user groups. An 11% reduction in parking demand is achievable under a paid parking system at PCM. The anticipated potential reduction in demand will be achieved through an increase in vehicle occupancy and an increase in transit ridership," end quote. Two comparative scenarios are referenced in the memo. Beaver Creek, where the parking garage specifically mentioned with its $10 per day daily parking, is owned, managed, and priced by the town. And also Alta, where the only people going all the way up Little Cottonwood to the gold miners and Albee on facelots are those committed to skiing for the day, not dropping off, picking up, shopping, sightseeing, looky-looing, or poaching residential streets to try and circumnavigate traffic or find free parking. So in light of these two totally incomparable scenarios, let's boil down what Vail and Planning Director are asking us to play stock in with the Fair and Peers study. It is a proprietary model involving unspecified parking studies done in the context of communities/scenarios of varying comparability or lack thereof to PCMR, the specific and average degrees of which are unknown, and yet citing the incredibly specific reduction in parking demand of 11% based on the wholly unrealistic increase in average vehicle occupancy to get to 2.7 ABO and an increase in transit ridership we cannot support here in Summit County because transit is neither direct nor improving. So you see how Fair and Peers is apparently conducting analysis in the same parallel universe in which Vail asserts its successfully operated world-class ski resorts in the 21/22 season. Once again, Vail's May 23 PMP memo, the applicant connects CCCs and parking. And now it defers to the expertise of SE Group. One of its intended lift upgrades and references to the MUP, it says, quote, "This results in an increase in CCC of 290. As provided in a memorandum from SE Group, these upgrades will not generate an impact on parking." SE Group, who is the leading national expert on ski area planning, states that "the overall capacity of the mountain will not significantly increase with these lifts, based largely on the fact that these lifts are replacement lifts. This is consistent with the city's approach to previous lift projects," end quote. So SE Group isn't wrong to conclude that mere replacement lifts serving the same or similar terrain wouldn't generate significant increases in CCC. Where this consultant, and everyone else for that matter, is wrong is incorrect calculation of the CCCs, both historically and as these numbers factor for the proposed lift upgrades we are appealing today. And it's quite the miss for the leading national expert on ski area planning. So now, if you don't mind, I'm going to get a little Katie Porter over here. And we're going to model some of these CCC things. Clive, if you don't mind holding this. Okay, thank you. Okay. So per the 1998 MUP. Sorry, Angela, do you have that? Is that, sorry, I'm like, can you see? You kind of, can you guys? Okay, so you know what? You have two, you have tables that you can actually reference and in the back here. Okay.
It's the last page, it's not still down.
Yep, okay. Okay, so look at those. So, okay. So per the 1998 MUP, the total allowable CCC of the entire resort, unless new terrain is added, is this 13,700 number, okay, forever. That was a limit in 1998, and that remains the limit today. Now, under this overall limit, each lift has a determined CCC. These individual calculations are based on size and speed of a lift, the scale of the terrain it serves, the level of skier it supports, et cetera. While lifts may be removed, or in the case we are considering today, upgraded, thereby changing their individual CCCs, the total CCC at Park City Mountain may never exceed 13,700 for an ordinary ski day. And this is per the MUP deferred to by the DA that we all inarguably accept as the guiding and binding document here today. While the staff report discusses total CCCs, the Planning Director, per their specific approval, breaks things down lift by lift, which you can't just cherry pick. The individual CCCs always have to be analyzed and adjusted under the cap of the overall resort CCC. The applicant gets it, which is why Vail asserts this lift upgrade plan only brings the collective CCC to 12,860, which would obviously be within the overall CCC limit. And yet, another professional consultant retained by PCMC for analysis on this matter, EcoSign, calculates a total CCC of 13,130. So this number, okay, is obviously different from Vail's CCC calculation, but still within the allowable CCC limit. Alas, it too is wrong. And now this is where things get a little complicated, so please bear with me. Assigned to each lift and part of calculating individual CCCs is something called the VTF, or more simply, the vertical demand. Okay, and so the vertical demand of the CCCs are what are represented on my abbreviated table here. This metric factors, among other things, both terrain and skier level. This metric factors, among other things, both terrain and skier level. If terrain is more expert, then it stands to reason it will serve more experienced skiers who will ski faster and get back to lifts faster, i.e. higher use and higher vertical demand. Conversely, more intermediate terrain will serve slower moving skiers who will take longer to ski back to chairlifts, i.e. lower demand and lower VTF. Vertical demand, aka VTF, and CCC are inversely proportional. In this case, okay, Ecosign arrived at its 13,130 number because it rightly downgraded the vertical demand Vail shows of 19,087 for the Eagle Lift and takes it to between 12,000 and 13,000 to match the terrain that lift serves, which is predominantly intermediate. This is all in Ecosign's review. Anyone looking at a ski map can confirm this terrain. But then Ecosign expert took the 13,130 number they arrived at, and they just swapped it without explanation for a 12,850 number, which is only 10 off from the SE Group number presented in the staff report and cited by the applicant. So where does the 12,860 number come from for staff and SE Group? Well, staff essentially closes down Three Kings to zero skiers. They theorize this is possible because the new, faster, bigger lift could become more popular, which we could then theorize makes this more attractive as an initial loading lift for skiers, which probably attracts more skiers, which means more cars, but I digress. Vail has no actual plans to shut down Three Kings. We already know this to be a skiable lift all on its own, as opposed to a mere transporter connector to other lifts that serves the terrain park and other runs. If there are plans to shut it down, they are not disclosed as part of this application. And now we get into the fuzzy math. In the MUP, King Kong is a detachable quad. So that would be this Table 44 from the MUP. King Kong is a detachable quad with a CCC of 1790 and a vertical demand of 12,061. When King Kong was upgraded to a six-pack in 2015, which would ordinarily increase the CCC, we see the CCC instead went down to 1380. And that's because Vail magically increased the vertical demand number to 19,398. That's an increase of nearly 61%. But as we just confirmed, vertical demand is a factor of terrain. And what we also know is the terrain around King Kong never changed. This means the vertical demand the applicant shows is way off. And applying the same logic Ecosign did for the Eagle Lift and realizing King Kong functions similarly over similarly intermediate terrain, we realize the vertical demand for this lift should be in the 12,000 to 3,000 range. Because again, the terrain didn't change, no matter how badly Vail wants its vertical demand number two. So if we plug back in the 12,061 from the original MUP, then the CCC for King Kong increases by a whopping 25% to 2,230. This alone exceeds the total allowable CCC for King Kong by 440. And anyone capable of reading tables and performing basic addition sees that this increase of 850 brings the total CCC to 13,980, which now puts us over our max capacity of 13,700. I'm not done yet. Let's do Silverload. Formerly called New Prospector, this was a four-person lift that also went to a six-pack, but back in 1996. Like King Kong, the CCC went down from 2,080 to 1650. That's because the vertical demand magically increased from 11,769 to 15,567. Okay, and that is in the existing table. But if you go to Vail's proposed table, the number once again magically jumps to 16,934. And again, the terrain did not change. No more expert terrain, no more expert skier. So like I said, fuzzy math, outright manipulation of numbers even. As you can see, this puts Vail, this puts Vail even further over the total allowable CCC for the resort. It also means any upgrades to Town Lift are completely off the table as there is no room, zero room, left to increase that lift's CCC. And oh no, it means that the entire PMP submitted with PEG's application, and really PEG's whole application, need to be thrown out because all the numbers and assumptions are wrong by a lot. The miscalculated and already significantly exceeded CCCs confirm absolutely this application violated the MUP and therefore the DA, and therefore violated the LMC, and therefore never met conditions for administrative review. On this basis alone, our appeal must be upheld and the decision of Planning Director overturned. Furthermore, since it is clear, based on what is written over and over again in the documents in today's packet, and also what we have experienced in the real world out there, which is quite simply that increased skier numbers significantly increase parking demand and therefore require significant, specific, measurable, enforceable, and meaningful mitigation, no one can reasonably separate any aspects of development or upgrades from complete parking analysis and mitigation. Paid parking, as Vail proposes it, is to exist inside an unsupported vacuum, void of legitimate parking and transit alternatives, and therefore wholly inadequate as a mitigation strategy. The various consultant findings Planning Director and the applicant are inclined to rely on are best anecdotal, generally lacking critical analysis, and at times flat out wrong. The suitability of administrative review hinges entirely on compliance with the DA and MUP, which specifies the single metric that both guides and limits all lift upgrades. That is the CCC. And what we, the appellants, have shown is that compliance with the MUP and that the effects of any differences in use or scale have been mitigated are both impossible to confirm by Planning Director and Attorney Harrington because they and the applicant are all using the wrong numbers. But if there is any debate as to whether or not these lift upgrades satisfy conditions for administrative review, we once again encourage you to resist pressure and haste and take the time to consider that the plan fails to meet the various criteria for approval, including most significantly, compliance with and proof of sufficient parking mitigation. Like the community, we want an upgraded mountain experience, including upgraded lifts, but it is critical that we not just keep allowing things that sound good in theory, like discount ski passes, but don't legitimately support anything beyond Vail's shareholder dividends to further exacerbate our already tenuous problems. In the case of these lift upgrades, superficial consideration might promote skier flow and help the glaring PR problem Vail has and account of lift lines that made headlines this season. But if not within the allowable CCCs and without proper mitigation to secondary impacts, these lift upgrades, like everything else Vail has brought to Park City, will do more harm than good. Do your jobs, commissioners, we trust you.
All right. Well, you got a lot out there in a short amount of time, so good job. So let's see. That was about 40 minutes long. And so we'll turn to the Planning Director. We have about 15 minutes allotted for your time.
Great, thanks. I'll try and keep it in the 15 minutes. So good evening again, Gretchen Milliken, Planning Director. This presentation or this 15 minutes, I will be basically addressing the 11 points, or actually five of the 11 points that the applicant argued in summation of their appeal. And the reason that we're addressing five, one for time, we're trying to keep this within 15 minutes, but also that several, we found that several of the 11 points touch on similar issues. And in responding to five of them, we feel that we've sort of adequately addressed a lot of the appellant's arguments by addressing those. Before I start this, I just want to introduce Lillian Letter, who has been the planner on this application. She's joining me here today. And I also want to introduce Dave Felius, who is our third-party consultant from Ecosign. And Dave is joining us virtually. I think he should be promoted. So if you're able, Dave, and you want to turn your screen on, then people will be able to see you. I will go run through these five points in this presentation. And then I was going to offer Dave Felius for you all because I'm sure you're probably after Angela's or the appellant's presentation or arguments, you probably have some questions about CCCs and the numbers and all that kind of stuff. So that's the reason that Dave's here tonight. Okay. So number one of the points made by the appellant. The applicant does meet the standard of review for granting administrative conditional use permits. Again, we return to Section 2.3 of the Development Agreement. And I think we agree is the document of the hour of the evening, which states that development of skiing and related facilities as identified in the Mountain Upgrade Plan is a conditional use within the city limits and is a subject to administrative review so long as the development of skiing-related facilities are identified and compliant with the Mountain Upgrade Plan. And so I'm going to go to the next slide. And I think, Lillian, you've got your figure there. So this is the map that is in the Mountain Upgrade Plan. And I just want to indicate, so the green line there that is dotted, that is the current Silverload Lift. The reason it's dotted is that in 1998, that lift didn't exist. So, but it was projected that a lift would be put there. So the Silverload has been identified in the Mountain Upgrade Plan. It is one of the lifts that was foreseen back in 1998 as being an upgrade or an addition to the mountain. Lower below that, you see the two yellow lines, which are solid lines. In 1998, that was the Eagle and the Eaglelet. They were in place in 1998 when the Development Agreement. Next to it is a dotted line, also in yellow. That line is going to be the new, well, is proposed to be the new Eagle Lift. The, and it's in the Mountain Upgrade Plan in that location. Next to that is also a dotted line. That was a proposed Chandela. And I think, as you've read, they keep talking about the Eagle as the new Chandela. So the new Eagle that is going in will also replace the Chandela Lift and take it. The Chandela will not be added to the resort in the future. It's not, it's no longer part of the Mountain Upgrade Plan. It becomes kind of together with the Eagle. That makes sense. So that, as you can see, is in the map, in the Mountain Upgrade Plan. The next slide is the chart with the CCCs. And these were back, these were the CCCs for the lifts that were identified, that were in place in 1998. And it also has the lifts that were being proposed, so the lifts that were the dotted lines on that map. So you have the new Chandela, which was to be an eight-passenger and having a CCCs of 1,230. And the new Prospector, as Angela pointed out, is the Silverload with a CCC of 2,080. So those are in the Mountain Upgrade Plan. With this application, we asked that, because that is a chart from 1998 and doesn't necessarily reflect the mountain today, we asked the applicant to submit a new chart showing a new CCC plan that's fully updated, has all the right correct lifts and all the information so that we kind of knew where we were starting from. This isn't that easy to read since it's a pretty big graph. So we've pulled out the new Prospector, or what is the Silverload. And what the ninth, and you can see on the right-hand side, you've got the 1998 CCCs. You have the current CCCs and the proposed CCCs for 2022. In addition, so this is where the new Chandela comes in. So the new, while the new Eagle is in that location that was showed on the map, it's actually taking the place of the Chandela in terms of its capacity. So the new Chandela will be the new Eagle. In 1998, they projected a comfortable carrying capacity of 1,230. And the proposed for the lift going in would be 580. Okay, I'm going to go to number two here. The application satisfies conditions of approval for conditional use under Utah Code 10-98-5072A. So the Utah Code establishes the standard of review for administrative conditional use, and which is a land use authority. And in this case, the Planning Director or designee is a land use authority, shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use. So in this case, looking at the application together with the updated parking plan, combined with the 19 conditions of approval, we felt that all reasonably mitigate, that all, these combined, all reasonably mitigated anticipated detrimental effects, and therefore was reason to approve. Number three, the application adequately mitigates and addresses the review criteria for conditional uses. So in the Land Management Code 15-1-10, they set forth that conditional, the conditional use review process, which is used for both conditional use permits with what the Planning Commission reviews, but it's also used for administrative conditional use permits, which are staff-level review. According to the Land Management Code, a conditional use shall be approved if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards. Again, this parallels sort of the Utah Code. Parallels with the Utah State Code. I want to point out one thing here. So I'm going to move to the next slide here. The appellant argues that the conditional use permit, a review criteria, specifically 2, 3, 5, 6, 13, and 16, did not satisfy the conditions of approval for conditional uses. So those have been pulled out in this graph where we're showing the review criteria and also sort of an analysis for approval. I'm not going to go through these. These are in the staff report. We've got all this information. What I do want to point out here, though, is that an administrative conditional use permit in this case is using the six criteria identified in the Development Agreement. So when we're looking at lift upgrades, we are running through the six criteria of the Development Agreement. We're running them through the Land Management Code, the 16 criteria of a conditional use review in the Land Management Code. Whereas if the application came to you as a conditional use, you would only review those with the 16 criteria from the Land Management Code. So in this case, the administrative review process is actually more regimented than if it was just a conditional use. So number four, the administrative conditional use was approved in compliance with the ski operation improvements. And those are those criteria 1 through 6 in the Development Agreement. So criteria 6, again, the 2.3 of the DA. And we're not, this isn't a peak day. This is, this is about the compliance with the Development Agreement, establishes parking mitigation requirement for a ski lift upgrade. The applicant argues sort of the peak ski day, and we are actually reviewing this with, looking at it as a ski lift upgrade. So a little bit maybe clarification here. So a peak ski day, while it's commonly used in ski development discussions and it's actually referred to in the Development Agreement and in the Mountain Upgrade Plan, there's, it's not actually defined in the Development Agreement, the Mountain Upgrade Plan, or in the Land Management Code. So we don't use that as a standard to measure a don't use that as a standard to measure against because we don't actually have a definition of, legitimate definition for peak ski day. We have the current available parking at the ski resort is at 1,950 stalls. That's the current parking. The updated parking mitigation plan, according to, you know, what's been presented and the data, makes available 300 parking stalls. So if you take the 11% parking demand reduction and of the 1,950, and you add the 90, you come up with 304.5. This more than satisfies the development agreement and the land management code, a criteria for ski lift upgrades. So those six criteria plus the 16 in the land management code, it satisfies both of those. So the upgraded parking mitigation plan is aiming to reduce the average parking demand by 11%, incentivizing carpooling and transit options. It's adding an additional 90 spaces for employee parking offsite. So it's pulling the employees out off of the base mountain, opening up those spots. And it's also continuing to park skiers at the high school on weekends. Now, we understand that this isn't the be all end all solution. There is not a silver bullet here. This is incremental. We're not going to solve this overnight. This is the paid parking and the reservations and the communication and starting to look at offsite locations for parking and other modes of transit getting to the mountain is incremental. It's a step forward in changing modal behavior and changing the way that we, we get to and from the resort. Number seven, the conditions of approval mitigate possible detrimental effects. So we feel that the conditions of approval, that the 19 that were added to the administrative conditional use permit sufficiently mitigate the impacts of the proposed upgrades. So the appellant notes issues regarding to the conditions of approval for 13, 14, 15, 18, and 19. So I'm just going to run through those, I was just about to say real quick, but it might take a minute. Any condition of approval 13, any proposed overflow parking with canyons and Park City School District must be approved by Summit County and the school district respectively. So this condition was put forward to require the applicant to establish legal parking mitigation agreements with Park City School District and Summit County. The applicant has subsequently confirmed that they now hold a contract with Park City High School for the next ski season. Condition of approval 14, the applicant shall provide information that the proposed parking mitigation plan is in effect before the start of the 2022, 2023 ski season. This includes the implementation of 90 employee parking spaces at Munchkin and a paid parking reservation system. And this condition is to specify a timeline for the applicant to establish and implement the currently proposed parking mitigation plan. And if the conditions are not met within this timeline, a building permit will not be issued for the lift upgrades. Condition of approval 15, the applicant shall meet with the planning director and other relevant staff biannually to provide parking and traffic information, demonstrating compliance with the parking mitigation plan, and a communications plan to ensure information dissemination to the public. The applicant shall share relevant parking information with staff, including parking lot occupancy rates and achievement of increased average vehicle occupancy rates. The planning director may impose additional conditions if the currently proposed parking mitigation plan results in ongoing adverse impacts or is not achieving a demonstrated increase, increased average vehicle occupancy. So this is set forth to work with the applicant to establish measurable parking data. City teams are working internally right now to outline prior to the ski season, specific, what specific data would be required to demonstrate compliance. And the condition of approval also allows the city to adjust parking mitigation if necessary. There's some flexibility built into that. Condition of approval 18, the applicant shall be responsible for effectively managing the parking reservation system with an onsite parking attendance presence with a turnaway and tow policy for people without a reservation. This was to establish the monitoring of the new parking mitigation system and to promote safety within the city. If the condition is not met, the city would require review and stricter implementation per the condition of approval for number 15. And lastly, here, we have the condition of approval number 19. The applicant shall use the net proceeds generated from paid parking at the Mountain Village Base Area of Park City Mountain Resort to reinvest in transportation, transit, traffic mitigation, and/or parking measures to support guest access to the resort and traffic mitigation in and around the resort. The applicant shall provide an accounting regarding the net proceeds and will review the resort's expenditures on these measures, including if requested by the city, verification of the expenditures by an independent third party. The applicant shall discuss in good faith any proposed expenditures by the city that advance the city's infrastructure goals at each biannual review. If funded, such proposals will be documented pursuant to an amendment to the parking mitigation plan process as part of the biannual review. This condition was, sorry, this condition was negotiated to work with Park City Mountain in establishing a parking mitigation plan that would benefit future parking management, transit, and transportation improvements and traffic mitigation endeavors for both Park City Mountain and the city until at least a base development is approved and realized. Additional information and documentation is required to hold the applicant accountable for implementing the parking mitigation plan. Model, this is actually modeled after the Flagstaff Historic Preservation Agreement, which is in place and then a successful model. It intentionally gives us flexibility. And it's again modeled after something that we've done in the past and has worked successfully. I'll also mention on condition of approval 19, it's important for the city to partner with the mountain to come up with solutions. This is a partnership. They're in our community. They're used by not only the members of our community, but by all the guests and visitors coming to our city. And to kind of build up a wall between them and us doesn't really make a lot of sense. So the, some of these conditions of approvals are really about creating a dialogue, creating platforms and where we can work out situations, the issues that are arising. Like I said, we all know parking is a difficult issue. There's no silver bullet. And if we're not working together, we're certainly not going to be solving it. This slide is showing the other points made by the appellant, five, six, eight, nine, 10, and 11. Again, I think those have been answered in the five that I addressed. But if you have any questions on those, we're happy to answer. And I will conclude with our recommendation, and that is that staff recommends that the planning commission deny this appeal based on the findings of fact, the conclusions of law, and the conditions of approval outlined in the final action letter. And with that, I'll, as you know, we have Dave Felius from Echo sign with our CCCs, and Lily and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, were you wanting to have Dave add anything at this time? Or is he here for answering questions?
I think he's here mainly to answer questions regarding the CCCs, but Dave might have something to say regarding the appellant's numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have anything to say at this point, but if you have any questions, then I can answer whatever, whatever you ask.
Okay, we'll just keep going then for now, so we can get everyone's point of views. So next, I'd like to just keep going and we'll go to the, the applicant's response.
Good evening, commissioners.
Welcome.
I'm Mike Gore, Vice President of Vale Resorts. I was previously the Vice President and Chief Operating Officer of Park City Mountain. And I have the good fortune this evening of, as part of this process, introducing Deidre Walsh, the resort's new VP and COO, who will, will kind of tag team this presentation. I'm going to kick it to her in just a moment and let her introduce herself to all of you. But a little bit of background, Deidre and I have worked together for many years. She is an extraordinary leader who has worked previously at Park City Mountains, spent many years here in town with her family. And we are so fortunate for her return to the resort. She has been here a week now. And tremendous support from the community and the staff, just a lot of excitement for Deidre's return. And I can tell you that we're all in mighty good hands going forward. And a huge amount of gratitude to Deidre in coming back and filling this role. So, Deidre, let me pass it to you and let you do a better of an introduction.
Thank you, Mike. First, I want to just thank Mike for his dedication to this transition and all that he's done at the resort and in conjunction with the city. And Mike is an absolute leader that always leads with integrity. He's demonstrated that time and time again. And I'm lucky to be sitting next to him today in front of the commission. With that, good evening, commissioners. I will keep this relatively short in the interest of time, but I wanted to take a moment just to quickly tell you a little bit about myself and share the gratitude that I have for this opportunity to return to Park City and to lead Park City Mountain Resort. It's a place that is really near and dear to my heart. I moved to Park City in 2004, and I started working at Park City Mountain Resort in 2007 when it was then owned by Powdercore. I spent the next 12 years at Park City in various roles before I had the opportunity to move in 2019 to lead in another amazing resort at North Star, California. But when I think about the highlights of my career, it always comes back to Park City. And there's a lot of different reasons for that. I think first and foremost, because of the team that makes that resort so special. And additionally, a lot of the highlights are tied to the incredible capital improvements that were made in my time here. That includes my direct involvement at the Summit House in building Miners Camp and the historical Mid-Mountain Lodge project. And above and beyond that, being part of the senior leadership team, I got to see so many amazing capital projects, upgrades to Motherload, to King Kong, the silver gondola going in, countless snowmaking projects, commitment to zero initiatives. Those are just a few of the highlights that I think were so important to me as a leader, to recognize what that means to be a world-class resorts and those kind of investments that we've made over time in this community and on the mountain. So now I'm back in town, I think eight days, just to be clear, not a full two weeks here. And I'm just thrilled to be working alongside this team again and to be thinking about ways to enhance the guest experience in every way possible. I'm also just as excited to return here with my husband. He owns a local business in Park City, and we have two young kids and are thrilled to be back and get them integrated into this town again. With that, I know I have a lot of history here, but I think that you will find with me is that I am dedicated to the collaboration that I know that it'll take from all sides to really realize the opportunities that are ahead of us. And I cannot wait to work with everyone in this community to bring those opportunities to light. Thank you.
Thank you, Deidre. Chair Phillips, I'm going to keep us on schedule, at least for my part. So I'm going to jump right into it. And thank you again. I'd like to make some other quick introductions. So you know who from our team is here. John Sale, Director of Mountain Planning, Mike Lewis, our Senior Director of Base Operations, Allison Turberville, our Legal Counsel, Brent Bateman, Outside Counsel, as well as, Farin Pierce was referenced earlier, John Nepstead is here as Traffic and Parking Consultant. So as the city explained, we're here tonight for an appeal. And the only issue on appeal is whether the planning director correctly issued an administrative CUP that allows Park City Mountain to upgrade two lifts. And in fact, she did. The planning director reached her decision after employing a rigorous and thorough process. She analyzed our application for over three months, required us to develop a transformative parking mitigation plan, retained an outside consultant, in addition to the two consultants the resorts had previously retained, sought public comments, reviewed input from, reviewed input from appellants and other community members, and held a lengthy public hearing. Only then did the planning director issue an administrative CUP containing 19 detailed conditions of approval. We appreciate the work that the planning director and the staff put into reviewing the application. We also appreciate the engagement of the community. As the commission can see from the record, there's strong community support for the two proposed lift upgrades and for the transformative parking mitigation plan that accompanies them. Eight community members spoke in support of the lift upgrades at the administrative CUP hearing, and the planning director's staff has received 39 or perhaps more additional letters of support. We've reached out to the community members that have expressed concern to better understand their issues, including the appellants. While we have not heard back from the appellants, we've followed up with others, including various HOA representatives in the Historic Main Street Alliance. I want to start tonight at a high level and talk about why we do lift upgrades. Park City Mountain is the largest resort in the United States. We have vast terrain, gives us tremendous amount of space for skiers and riders. Modernizing the Eagle and Silver Lowglifts, which by the way, are 49 and 26 years old respectively, is key to maintaining a world-class experience by moving people more effectively and efficiently up and around the mountain on state-of-the-art lifts. This is a significant enhancement to the guest experience. And to be clear, once again, this is not about moving more people. It's about moving people more efficiently. There are essentially three places skiers and riders can be on the mountain. They're on the ski trail, on the, in the lift line, or on the lift. The upgraded lifts will move people out of the lift line more quickly and onto the lift or the trails, giving guests more time to enjoy the mountain. To put a finer point on this, in the last 15 years, there have been over 500 lift upgrades and new ski lifts installed across the United States. This represents 20% of all lifts in the country. Industry data shows skier visitation during that period of time has increased 1%. Even though the data demonstrates that lift upgrades do not drive increases in visitation and increased parking demand, we still went beyond the requirements for an ACUP and presented the transformative parking mitigation plan with this project that includes a reservation system with paid and free parking options. The community wants and expects the resort to invest in resort infrastructure and to continuously improve the experience. That is why the city approved a development agreement that sets out a straightforward administrative CUP process for lift upgrades identified in the mountain upgrade plan. And that is also why Vale Resorts has invested a total of $127 million in upgrades at the resort since the acquisition. I bet about the two lifts. As you've heard, the first is Silverload. The area around Miners Camp can get busy. It's a very popular area. And this new lift will more efficiently move people out of that area and back up the hill and circulate. We also want to remove the existing Eagle and Eaglelet lifts and install the new Eagle High Speed Six Pack Chair. In addition to moving people more efficiently out of the base area, this upgraded lift importantly will help spread skiers across the terrain, provide better access to the front of the mountain, and improve circulation to the King Kong and trails on the upper part of the mountain. Taking a step back, the city has approved the DA and Mountain Upgrade Plan that governs the proposed lift upgrades. The DA requires Park City Mountain to mitigate the parking impacts of any proposed ex- The DA requires Park City Mountain to mitigate the parking impacts of any proposed expansion lift capacity. As part of its review, staff encouraged us to submit the project-specific parking mitigation plan. As I said before, we are of very strong opinion and are certain the data supports that these lift upgrades generate no incremental parking demand for the resort. That said, at staff's request, we created the mitigation plan for parking that is, as I said earlier, indeed transformative. It will fundamentally change guest parking incentives and will positively impact the base area. The main component of the parking mitigation plan is the implementation of a reservation system with both paid and free parking options in all Mountain Village lots. What this means is guests will be required to make a paid reservation in advance to park in one of the more than 1,200 parking spaces at the base area before 1:00 PM. Guests who carpool with at least four people in the car still need a reservation, but they can park for free. After 1:00 PM, guests do not need a reservation and parking is free. Let me walk through the benefits. Paid parking and reservations will fundamentally change the behavior. That is what we need. We've heard it from the community, we've heard it from staff, and we agree. Farron Pierce, the leading expert on parking and traffic, studied the impacts of paid and reservation parking implemented at other locations and has qualified for us some of the benefits in the report. They're here tonight to support the parking mitigation plan and answer any questions. Some of the benefits include paid parking significantly reduces overall parking demand. We spoke about that earlier. The Planning Director spoke to those decreases. The reservation system spreads out arrival times. This is very important. Without reservations, there's the very short and intense period when guests seek to access the resort in order to get a parking spot. This leads to congestion, longer lift lines as guests arrive before the lifts open. Reservation system will allow guests to arrive at the time that best fits their plan. This is a significant improvement in the guest experience for both locals and destination guests, and it will also improve the local traffic experience significantly. Speaking of traffic, I should note, the DA does not require Park City Mountain to mitigate traffic impacts for the proposed lift upgrades. Nevertheless, our parking mitigation plan will help to reduce traffic mitigation. Because Park City Mountain will inform guests about the reservation requirement well in advance of their arrival, fewer guests will come into the base area and have to circulate looking for parking spaces and then failing to secure a spot and continuing to circulate. Guests do not secure a reservation or do not wish to pay for a reservation will be instructed in advance to park at other locations, including Canyons Village or Park and Ride Lots, as well as the high school on weekends and holidays. The ACUP's conditions of approval capture Park City Mountain's commitment to invest in net proceeds of our paid parking revenues and improvements to overall parking, traffic, transportation, and transit operations. This is not a new revenue stream for the resort. In addition to the reservation system, the parking plan includes several other mitigation efforts that will more than mitigate any detrimental parking impacts from the lift upgrades. As the Planning Director mentioned, we're activating additional parking in our Munchkin parking lot. We will continue to use our TDM program to incentivize carpool and transit use by resort employees. We have implemented, or will be implementing, a resort subscription-based testing message specific to communicate parking and traffic information to our guests. We have the ability to geo-fence email communications to passholders to make them aware of the new reservation system and give them real-time information. Finally, the Park City Mountain partnered with the city this past season to reconfigure circulation in the base area. This proved very effective, and the resort is committed to continue to implement that pattern which prioritizes transit. The resort and the city are already meeting to discuss operations for next season, and we are committed to continuing that partnership. All of these mitigation efforts, together with the ACUP's 19 detailed conditions of approval that the Planning Director covered, benefit the community and aptly meet the DA's parking requirements. I want to note that we understand these are big changes that require significant work to manage. Our resort team is focused on ensuring a smooth rollout of the plan, including close collaboration with the city staff, engagement with community stakeholders, and ongoing assessment of the plan. As mentioned, we've engaged Farron Pierce. They will support us in this effort. They will also observe how the new parking management plan is working onsite at several key points during the holiday season, during the season, including holiday periods and busier weekends. FMP will generate a report after each of these observation periods that we will share with the city staff. I'll conclude by talking generally about the relationship between the resort, the community, and the city. We've heard concerns that the resort is not paying its fair share and that we don't care about the community. This isn't true. I've been a part of this committee, community for many years, as has Deidre. It's our home. Our employees are immensely proud of the community where we operate, just like you. They come to work every day to make sure our guests, our neighbors, our visitors have an experience of a lifetime. As I mentioned, we partnered with the city to make operational adjustments to improve traffic flow. This collaboration has been very successful in prioritizing transit as well as improving circulation in and around the base. And our teams are already meeting, as mentioned earlier, to begin discussions for next year's operation. We've committed to reinvesting the net proceeds. And interestingly, according to the Park City Chamber of Commerce, sales tax paid by resorts collectively comprised 70%, $28 million of the city's general fund revenue for the prior year. We also support 14,000 full and part-time tourism-related jobs and the subsequent half a billion dollars in labor income. Through our Epic Promise Program, our company gives nearly $4 million to local organizations and nonprofits in Park City. Again, we're part of the community. What you have for you tonight is another benefit the resort wants to provide to the residents and visitors of Park City. We're bringing state-of-the-art lifts and a transformative parking mitigation plan that will address many of the concerns we have heard throughout the past season. This is about guest experience. It's about transformation to address issues with traffic and parking. Our community expects us to provide a world-class resort. I'll finish by saying this. If we were to think about the part, the role that our resorts play in this community. We have a lot of employees who take great pride in where they work, what they do. Think about all the businesses that you own frequent and the pride we all want to have in the community. Something that the community tells us time and time again is an expectation that we deliver on experience of a lifetime. We have owned when we fall short. We've owned it. I've sat right at this table in front of Counsel. I've been on the radio, I've been in social media, and I've not avoided any of those issues. I've said, we own those issues. When there are issues, we own them. When there are issues that need collaboration, we ask to be at the table and be part of the solution. We're bringing forward a plan now that is in alignment with that. We are addressing parking, traffic in a transformative way. We have support from the city to do this. The community wants modern, state-of-the-art facilities, excuse me, and we are proposing to deliver on that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. I think we will just keep going through the list here, and so next we will go through and open the public hearing. So to help me, I'd like to see if I could get a raise of hands just to kind of give me an idea that'll help me gauge in a lot of time. Doesn't mean you can't change your mind and decide to get out, but it'll just help me gauge. And I'm also looking online too. And just for everyone's information, we've got 79. We have 79 attendees. Okay, all right. So judging by the amount of hands I have raised and the time we have allotted, and also expecting a few more people to step up, we're looking at about three to four minutes per speaker. And so, you know, we'll just ask that everyone be concise. And then also, if we could stick to, you know, the item on the agenda, which is the application, and anything that will help inform our decision on that would be beneficial. So I'm also going to... I need to step out for a few minutes, so I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Susser during this period while I'm out. I'll probably be out for about 10, 15 minutes. I apologize, but something's come up, and I got to go take care of it.
Okay, thanks, John. I guess we will then open up the public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on this application or this appeal, please step forward, state your name for the record. And sign in.
So, thank you, Commissioners. I'm Rob Sledham, and I am going to throw the schedule completely off tonight. So please bear with me. My three to five minutes hopefully will only take maybe a minute or two. And I could go on about my 50 years of living in Park City, my 48 years of ski passes at Park City, my 30-some years of ski passes at Deer Valley, living right close to the resort and seeing the traffic not only there but throughout the town. And we see it year-round, and it's not an easy solution. And I'm hoping that we all can keep working forward from promises from both resorts to help work on these solutions. But when we have a state highway going through the middle of our town, it becomes a little complicated, I have learned. So I've also been a business owner, a former business owner, for 42 years in the hospitality industry. And I know for a fact that I have heard over and over, not only from thousands of guests that I have hosted and homeowners, that in the past, any lift improvement that has been at either resort has been a big welcome, and it's been a good improvement. And so, you know, I appreciate hearing from both sides here. I think, you know, lots of great information. I think I have to do some homework on CCC's. I didn't have my calculator. And, but I believe that the Planning Department has thoroughly reviewed the facts and findings after I have read everything and heard everything tonight. So I believe that it's time to move forward and that the appeal should be denied and that we move forward from here. I think especially because of those 19 conditionals, conditions of approval, there is substantial fact. So I appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. My name is Bill Malone. Over the past 23 years, our family has enjoyed lots of different experiences in terms of skiing in our community. There's been numerous improvements to those experiences as well. And just some of those are things such as the Crescent Lift, which kind of replaced the old Ski Team Lift, the connection of Park City to the Canyons with the Gondola, the Orange Bubble, replacing the old Eagle Chair among many, many others during that time. We've also experienced improvements in facilities, such as Legacy Lodge, Miners Camp, Cloud Dine, spaces at the base of Tombstone, and even the ski bridge over Park Avenue, which had its own contentious hearings as well during that time. We've also looked at just overall experiences in terms of the improvements that are made in everything from snowmaking, energy consumption, grooming equipment, ski equipment, among many other items that we look to expect improvements in as we evolve in a sport. Overall, I see the lift improvements at the mountains that are up for approval as part of a continuous process of customer service improvements for those of us who enjoy the mountains and like to get up the mountain faster. That's what this is about. Part of this is overall evolution of the industry, but the other part is the creation of a better customer experience, which they, the skiing resorts, should be striving to accomplish. And then part of that is to get skiers up the mountain and out of the base area quicker so that they can be dispersed across the 7,300 acres of terrain and enjoy the ski experience to an even greater extent. This is a request for approval for another advancement in the skiing experience. But more important, the overall customer experience. And like any business in town, we should all be striving to make things better in what we do and how we deliver our services, whether that is investing in capital improvements, investing in our employees, or simply finding ways to make our customers like us even more. Why? Because it retains customers, reinforces brand, speaks positively for the experience. And as a longtime customer of the resort, I can only hope that I can look back at this lift improvement years from now and say thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, Peter Marth, Old Town resident, 40 years. Great presentation. I personally would just like to get away from all the details and the numbers and just try to understand a big-picture perspective from a local's perspective. Mike, I've been skiing Park City in the Canyons ever since I moved here in 1981. The last three or four years has become untenable because of the sheer volumes of skiers that Vale brings to the table with their industrial tourism model. This is a corporation that in order to make a return on their investments has to increase the volume and ticket sales and numbers in order to justify these investments. The devil's in the details, and I'll just say this about mitigation. This word really makes me uncomfortable. It's made me uncomfortable for years and years and years, mitigate. Because there's no real quantifying what mitigate means. You can say all you want, and it sounds great, but at the end, what's the proof that you're actually going to mitigate these impacts? I'll tell you, I have seen the traffic last two years has made it untenable. I have literally gone over to the Canyons on the bus, ridden people mover, went into the Orange Bubble line, which was backed up. I went right back. I got back on the bus and came all the way home. Now, this might have been a weekend and was busy, but this industrial skiing tourism model is not what Park City should be looking for. This is a very corrosive element. This is a corporate element that their bottom line is for profit and returning on their investments. You can say anything you want about you loving your community, but I'm very skeptical of it. I'm uncomfortable with it, the way it's presented. I'm also uncomfortable with a staff member of the city sitting with corporate lawyers and putting together numbers to make this administrative CUP go forward. I'm uncomfortable with that. I just want to say two sayings that are very, very important sayings. They're old wise men's sayings. First one is, figures don't lie, but liars figure. That's a very important thing to think about. You can make the numbers come out however you want, but it's all a guess. It's a crystal ball, and it's hopeful conjecture. What I see is an increasing... and it's hopeful conjecture. What I see is an increasing Salt Lake customer base, industrial customer base, coupled with the growth in our counties is just, is just gonna turn this town into just gridlock. And there's, any lift upgrades does nothing but move the volumes around quicker so that the guests aren't so pissed off at the end of the day. Well, I'll tell you what, the locals are already pissed off. We don't even go to ski anymore. We're just about done with it. Anyway. I'm sure Vail wouldn't invest twenty-two million dollars in mountain upgrades if they didn't think they could increase their business volumes. Thank you very much. I would, I would highly recommend that you that you grant this appeal and take a closer look at it in with more public hearings. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the room wishing to comment on this appeal?
Okay, Adam Strawn. Sorry, I can't see you in person, Commissioner Susser. It's been a long time. It's good to see you again.
Nice to see you, Adam.
And wish Commissioner Tim were here. I haven't seen him for a long time either. I was Planning Commissioner for ten years. Went through a lot of appeals, none, however, on a on a lift upgrade. This is pretty rare. Also to see it this polarizing is also very rare in my experience. We saw some language and turns today that I'd never seen in my ten years. Parasitic, careless, lazy. Those aren't, I think, why, I hope they make everyone as uncomfortable as they made me. I sat through the twenty-fifteen Crescent Upgrade. I also knew about and reviewed the twenty-fifteen King Con Upgrade. And there were no complaints anywhere after either of those upgrades. Now, what's different here? I don't know. I don't think there is anything different. We're talking about thirty-nine, a thirty-nine-year-old lift and a twenty-six-year-old lift. Not hard to see this coming, certainly. But all that aside, I always remembered when I was a Planning Commissioner, what are we really here to do? And that is, you're here to review an appeal. And it's a de novo review, as you well know, but that doesn't mean you don't give the Planning Director and the staff deference because they're professionals and they do this for a living. I always did. I found it resulted in a lot of great decisions. Sometimes you have to second guess them, but overall, they're doing a very fine job of what they do, and they did a good job here. I read the final action letter from the Planning Director, very detailed. Those conditions of approval are about as well drafted as I've seen. An excellent staff report, kudos. It again shows that there's been an in-depth analysis. This isn't a rubber stamp. They're putting this applicant through the wringer, as they should. And you also have two consultants who have echoed what the Planning Director and the staff member have all concluded. And with that, although it's a de novo review, you do have that body of knowledge to stand on. So I I urge you to look at it and to adopt it. In terms of the evidence, it's not at all clear. In fact, I don't, I don't think there is a correlation, at least not that I could find, between an increase in carrying capacity and an increase in parking. Without evidence from the app, excuse me, from the appellant on that, that's reason alone to deny the appeal. The consultants only identified minimal impacts to parking. And then the mitigation member measures to address those impacts, probably overmitigated in my assessment, which you don't see. Rarely do you see an applicant come that overmitigates. Here, I think, is one of those rare circumstances. You're all familiar with the CUP language in the state code and the land management code. This shall be granted. State laws is very much in favor of having these be granted, and the code language reflects that. You don't have to have perfect mitigation. You all know that as well. But in looking at the the conditions of approval that attempt to mitigate the identified minimal impacts, you've got fifteen, which says Park City Mountain Resort must share parking info. And the Planning Director can impose additional mitigation measures. I've never seen a a condition of approval like that. That gives the Planning Director a firm leash over this proposal. I'm surprised they actually agreed to that, but apparently they have. And then you've got cause of action nineteen. That is a unique thing. I haven't seen since Flagstaff where the proceeds from the paid parking system go to transit and traffic mitigation. That alone is a is a mitigating factor that probably overcompensates for any of the minimal impacts that the evidence shows this this upgrade may have. You know, it's easy to to sit back and throw grenades at a plan and to say it won't work and to say anecdotal evidence shows it won't work, and we all know that anecdotal evidence says X, Y, or Z. But when you're sitting in your chairs, looking at an appeal, you look at the evidence. And there's no consultant that I've seen that contradict the Planning Director's review, the staff's review, and the two non-related consultants. So with that evidence and conditions of approval such as fifteen and nineteen, it it's an appeal that I I think has to be denied. I'll I'll stop there. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you, Adam, and good to see you again. Okay. See, we've got, looks like four more hands raised.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if you're gonna have members, you should take a five-minute. Just for the record, the chair was listening when he left to the audio, but if we're gonna, you should, if people are gonna take a break, you should either take one all at the same time or just wait until he returns, so everyone can hear all the comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even see that he had left.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, like he had said, I was, just so everyone knows, I was listening while I was taking care of the other stuff, so. Should we? Okay, we'll just wait a minute for the other commissioner to return. Okay.
Hello, my name is Eric Durkis, and I've been in town since mid-eighties and love skiing, love any improvements we could do to the mountain to get me up faster because I usually have a short window of time to ski. So anything that'll minimize the the load at the lift lines is great. But I also live in the community. I live a bit a block away from base of Park City mountain. And the problems I've seen over the last few years have been mind-boggling with parking. People cutting through our community, recklessly cutting through our community, flying through there. We own the land. The road is private. We tried working with the city to try to come up with a solution. We now have to readdress it because the person we're working with before is no longer with the city. But I'm here as a local and a board member for my community. And the negative impact that we've seen over the years with skier traffic is unbelievable. Twice I've had people that have been distressed because I've told them this is a private area, please park elsewhere. Twice I've been tried to run over by people. I've had to contact the police one time because a person came back and threatened me with a firearm. The police ended up spending a lot of time with him. This is something that no one sees, no one can address because they're not out there in the trenches of what we deal with as locals. So I'm here. We put up signs that say parking is for our community. People have looked at them. I've watched them park, look at the signs, unload their kids, get out. I'll turn around and say, you know, this is a private area. They flip me off very kindly and keep on going. When the solution is we're gonna start charging people to park at the resort, what we're experiencing as a community is only gonna increase. Because when a family of four is coming up and they have a choice, it's twenty or thirty dollars to park or thirty dollars for a couple hamburgers, which one are they gonna choose? This is the real world. This is not numbers that somebody came up with and said, okay, if we do this, this, we move this around, such a little shell game. The real world is the people that are near the mountain, the base of the mountain, that have communities that have homes there are dealing with a lot of ramifications of the parking issue. And it's only gonna get worse now that we're talking about, we're gonna charge for parking. And somehow miraculously, that's gonna be eleven percent decrease. Nobody wants to go to high school. Nobody wants to waste another forty-five minutes of their ski day schlepping over to high school, waiting for the shuttle bus to come around and pick them up and drive them to base of the Park City mountain. People wanna get to the mountain. They wanna ski right away. If they can't find a spot right there, guess what? They're gonna go right around the corner and park in our our community, somebody else's community, some some area down the street, and they're not gonna be responsible and care about what we as a community have to deal with. We're paying taxes. What's even worse, like I said, our road is private and we're heading a wall with the city, trying to work with us, come up with a solution. So I don't know how these numbers translate. Personally, I think it's an alternate universe when you start thinking that we're gonna charge for this and it's gonna cause eleven percent decrease. You know, if you're, if the city, if Vale Corp wants to put somebody in our community to watch who's parking there and who doesn't have a pass because we're gonna implement passes because of this meeting, great. But at the end of the day, we're the ones that are taking the burden of the additional wearing tattered roads that we're paying for. The city's not paying for the roads, roadways, we are, which is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bill at this point for us to redo the roads. We're taking care of the snow removal. But when my wife is walking out to do the laundry at one of the remote laundry spots, somebody is flying by here at forty miles an hour, that's a safety issue. And the people don't care. They're coming through. They just wanna get to where they're going. So this is the real world issue that we, who live in the community, right by the base of the mountain are dealing with. Has anyone reached out to the local HOAs and asked them if they've seen a problem over the last three, four years? Has that happened? As part of this study?
We, we normally don't do Q and A back and forth during.
But I, but I'm. It's a one-sided study.
Yeah.
Okay, we're trying to get to one point. Anybody can do a study and say, this is the agenda that we're going after. I love the fact that we can get more skiers on the mountain or that I can get through my ski day quicker. But the real world problem that I'm dealing with is horrible. And it's something that our community as a whole is trying to come up with a workaround, but the city needs to work with us, and that's not happening. So just be aware of it. You know, I feel this appeal at this point should be granted because there's a lot of boxes that haven't been checked. A lot of things that have not been looked at that are real-world, everyday impacts. And you, as our people that are supposed to represent us, have to address that and look at that. For me to have to call the police because somebody is being ridiculous, not only tried running me over once, but then came back and told me he's getting his firearm.
Yeah, we, I think we've got, I think we've got your point, and we, and we really do appreciate you giving us your perspective.
Support the appeal.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else here in person? Go ahead.
My name is Eric Moxam. I've spoken here before, so thank you for allowing me to speak again on this issue. I know the city staff, the resort, the appellants, and now the planning commissioner have spent significant time on this matter, and so I respectfully appreciate everyone's efforts. I'm of the strong opinion that the city needs to hold the line and be consistent with the strict interpretation of the actual language in the governing development agreement and their related mountain upgrade plan and not be bullied by Vail. Both agreements are out of date based on the ski industry's evolution, as been talked about today by some of the people. Current market dynamics in the comfortable comparing carrying capacity, not of the mountain but of this town and of this community, based on the physical space and infrastructure limitations, which Vail is obviously oblivious. This common sense justifies that these agreements need to be renegotiated, especially if Vail is not comfortable with the strict interpretation of the existing agreements. The planned new Eagle Lift is just that, a new lift. It's not contemplated in the mountain upgrade plan, and then thus should not be subject to administrative review. And as a last comment and consistent with my earlier bully or bully characterization, Vail apparently thinks it can act with impunity. You know, to this end, I find it remarkable that Vail ordered both lifts prior to getting even an administrative CUP approval from the city. So apparently, they don't either respect the city government, its processes in the community, or they received improper assurances from city staff proper prior to the conclusion of the administrative review process and its subsequent approval. And, you know, based on my industry knowledge, lead times for ordering chairlifts are not exactly short. And then, you know, once again remarkably, this brazen behavior also has put Vail shareholders' capital at risk in case anybody cares about that. And then I'd say the last thing, and and I'll just bring this up because I know this has at least been included in the public comments, both prior to this and then in a article that was in the, I guess, Park, Park Record editorial. You know, the lead times of these, for these chairlifts are not so long, though, that they would jeopardize the resort potentially being a venue for the two thousand thirty or two thousand thirty-four Winter Olympics. So why the rush to order them so quickly, once again, without getting the proper approval? Thank you.
Okay, we have five more hands raised online and six. And so I'm gonna try to hold it to that at this point so we can get through our evening. Next, we have Thomas Jacobson.
Good evening. I assume you can hear me. Can you not, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, very good. I will also try to be brief. I, I would second a lot of the statements are made, particularly, I think Adam had the correct approach. And as some of the people in the room know, I have the privilege of serving as a chair on a state committee or a commission. And one of the things that, of course, is very important is you've got to take a look at the big picture and what is best for the citizens of the state of Utah as well as what is best for the community and for the people who come and visit us. One of the things that's quite clear about this project, irrespective of whether you believe the figures or you don't believe the figures, is the fact that this particular project is looking at addressing an existing problem. There's nothing in the project itself that goes out and advertises for more people to come to town, for people to be rude to our residents, as you have heard tonight, or in any other manner to be part of the marketing program that has long been a part of this city. As I noted in the written document that I provided to the Planning Commission, you know, one of the things we are dealing with in this town is being the victims of our success. And that's a separate issue from now trying to fix something that has, in fact, accrued because of our success. There are several of us who are either online or in the room who've skied a long time, and in my case, it was year two. And I can recall that the only way we got up the mountain was to ride in that miserable mountain in the, in the mining terrain. And so now we've seen a tremendous improvement in the results of the experience. I think it's really very important that you do take a look at the big picture and what's gonna happen if you don't do this? Where are we gonna be next year, five years down the road? Is the skiing experience gonna be any better, and will it really benefit Park City to uphold this appeal? I don't wanna take too much more of your time, but I just would like to leave you with one thought. And and that is that the only thing that's constant in this world is change. And we need to change. We need to all change our business practices. We need to change the way. And we need to change, we need to all change our business practices, we need to change the way we look at our city from time to time. And the people in our city who are willing to make millions of dollars of investment to make change. I think that needs to be looked at and it needs to be looked at with a positive view that it's not the city's money that's going into this. It's actually private money that's going into it and which will enhance the experience. So thank you very much and I encourage the commission to deny the appeal.
Okay, thank you, next we have Ed Parisian.
Unmute. Start video, alright guys. Hey, uh, as always, a great discussion, we love these things and that's why so many community members come out to these things because they're important to us. Um, just a couple quick things here, I just. Want to be upfront and honest, um, this new Eagle Lift. Is planned for the new beast base beach area, I mean, come on, let's be realistic, this is a precursor to building the base. Getting the beach going, um, and to me, that's the only reason. Despite what we may hear, um. When we will see more visits, so we talk about no new visitors here, but we talk. When this base is built and we don't want to combine the two, but they are combined because they're using some of the same mitigation. Parking traffic mitigation for this is they're gonna claim to use on the new base area, so these things are. Interchangeable, they're, they're, they're one in the same, this is a, just an, an expansion thing, it's prepping for the new base beach area. So, you know, you, you have paid parking reduces traffic. So we reduce it now, when the new base area comes and we already know it's crowded, we, then what? We can't use that mitigation anymore, we got the high school parking, we're going to use that for this cause. Alright, so when the new base area comes, what is their mitigation for that, high school's already used? So let's, they're combined, they're, they're absolutely combined, um. I got so many notes here, this whole thing is comical, uh. So let's talk about all the Kool-Aid that's been thrown here at you, um, by members of Vale about being. I, let me just say, I, I take offense, I personally take offense and I think a lot of my fellow locals will take offense to being lumped in constantly. By the verbiage residents and visitors. Every time there's an improvement, it's a, it's an improvement for the resident visit, well, that's not true. It's not, we have completely different, uh. Uh, expectations, I'm a citizen, I'm a resident here. Uh, do not, please lump me in with visitors, I'm sorry, don't. It's not true, we have different, every time you say, oh, we're going to improve this for the residents and business, well, that's not true. That's why we're here tonight, because we are the residents, I don't see any visitors coming here to speak tonight. These are all the people that are going to be personally affected by this decision. So let's just agree on that, um, any former chamber. Uh, executive director speaking is strictly to protect the money source. We get the TRT taxes, they get their money, this, this, this is not citizens, anyone, you know, Mr. Gore, Ms. Walsh. Vale pays their mortgage, do not listen to the fact that they claim to be good residents, I'm sorry. When my mortgage is on the line, I'm going to pretty much stick to the line, um. Uh, one more thing, planning director Milliken says traffic improvement. Shouldn't expect immediate results and she doesn't want to upset the partnership. Well, I'm sorry, we need to upset the partnership because it's pretty much one sided at this point. Does that play a part in your approval? Um, you know, let's just, let's just talk facts here then. The appellants showed ample facts as to the carrying capacity and all these other numbers and. I believe them truthfully, I mean, I know, um, Angela does her homework, these numbers are probably pretty darn good. Um, so you've got to take that into consideration, I mean, just the fact that, uh, planning director Milliken can issue. Administrative CUP doesn't mean it's based on the race, the right facts, um, and how it affects the community. So I, I say support the appeal and. Look at the mitigation factors, I mean, Mr. Gore says there are nineteen detailed, detail, that's a quote. Um, conditions of approval, anytime you have nineteen, that's a lot for just a lift. And number nineteen specifically, which is says the money's going to go reinvested back into traffic mitigation, transit, et cetera. There's no detail there, it just says it's going to be done. How, what, how much, um, and is that going to last forever?
Yeah, I'm going to ask you to just wrap up your comments, please.
I'm tired myself, I've only spoken four and a half minutes. So give me one more thing here, now you just lost me, so is this, uh, approval number nineteen condition, is this now permanent? Um, how long does it last? When does, do we get the parking proceeds all the time, twenty years, thirty years, forty years? These are things that need to be detailed, if you're going to approve this, then these things need to be brought up and spoken about, so. Thank you, I say support the, uh, appeal and let's get some more facts out there about what's really going on here. So thank you, John, I appreciate your, uh, listening and the rest of the commission.
Likewise, thank you. Okay, we have two more hands and I apologize, I'm just looking at the, we're well over and we have other applications. Um, so we just need to just keep moving, uh, next we have Winnie. Could you please state your full name for the record? You were promoted, so you need to unmute yourself. Okay, it may have been an accidental raised hand, which we get often, so let's move next to Alex.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, sorry about that, uh. My computer jumped all over the place. Good evening, planning commissioners and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I go by the name Winnie, though my full name for the record is Dr. Robert Winn, and you say you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I know you've had a very long day and evening, so I will be brief. As a private citizen who moved here before there was even one single stoplight. I've always taken great pride in any action our town has taken that made the local and or guest experience better. I can therefore personally support the proposed Park City lift enhancements. I think Park City Resort has met and exceeded all the conditions required. And the planning staff has done an excellent job on a very complex issue. The appeal should be denied. However, I want to add that I'm also the medical director of the ski clinics at the base of Park City and the base of Canyons. Those two clinics treat the vast majority of guests who are injured while skiing at the resort. In my medical director capacity, I strongly endorse the upgrades. Unlike most businesses in Park City, I want our clinics to be less busy. During the forty one years I've been involved with ski injuries, I witnessed congestion to be one of the major causes of injuries. I therefore totally support Park City's quest because the lift changes will decrease the number of patients that my team has to assist. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks for your comments. All right, we have, uh, next we have Alex, if you could please state your full name for the record.
Okay, I'm, I'm here, it took a minute, I'm assuming you guys can hear me?
Yes, uh, it sounds like Alex Batwinski.
Here's Alex Batwinski from Park Meadows. Um, I want to say first off, I appreciate what you guys are going through because seems to me I've seen this movie many, many times. Um, but it comes down, for me, it comes down to this. Um, was the decision that the planning director made within the scope of the MUP, I believe it did, does. Um, did the planning director interpret the scope and the issues correctly, I believe she did. And at the end of the day, as we all know, not all conditions can be mitigated. So is the, uh, approval and the conditions of approval sufficient to mitigate those impacts that we've heard tonight? There was a lot of emotion and there's been, you know, a lot of different opinions expressed. Um, and at the end of the day, I think, I don't know his last name, but Thomas who spoke earlier. Really boiled it down to all of the things, or not all, but most of the things that were mentioned are relevant to this appeal. And so I, I urge the commission to look at it in the context that I described. And I, again, I appreciate your service and I am in favor of you denying the appeal. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Kate, we have one more, uh, Jim Gaddis. And that hand I've seen it's been kind of going up and down, so I don't know if you're having technical difficulties, but we're going to promote you and then give you the opportunity to speak. Not seeing him getting promoted over. He's still on the attendees list. You should have received an alert on your screen. Yeah, I've, I've seen that hand going up and down, so I don't know what's going on there. Uh, we did have one other, actually, we did have one other that was similar. And so I will give opportunity to, um, Richard Joffe, if you have anything you would like to add. And, and I just asked the last couple speakers, just trying to, um, be concise. Okay, Mr. Joffe, you are promoted and just need to unmute yourself.
Hi. I live in Park Meadows, I've lived, I've lived in, I've had a house in Park City for forty one years. This was the first year that I rode the bus, I rode the bus twenty five times. I think that we are the problem, the people that live in Summit County. And if you realize how much Utah is growing, we have to do something. And if people do not use the public transportation, nothing is going to work. I think by charging might make it more difficult for people, but it is really easy. I mean, I was taking round trips fifty, I wait fifteen minutes to get a bus. If I'm early, if I, I know exactly what time the bus is coming at. And I think that people have to realize there's got to be change. I'm sure that Sears and Roebuck wishes that they knew there was going to be change. They're not around anymore, so we have to do something. And when I came here, there wasn't a traffic light in town. Two twenty four was two lanes and as soon as you four lane two twenty four, everybody came to town. Um, I want to thank the, uh, the, uh, planning department, I think they did a marvelous job and please deny this.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, um. Which leaves us with, uh, the opportunity to respond by, um, the appellants. Um, if you have any, uh, last comments to make, um, I, I am going to need to limit it though, because. We, we almost can't get through the rest of our evening and that's not fair to the other applicants, so I'll give you a five, six, seven minutes, maybe? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Practice, I am.
I know you understand.
I'm under five, Deborah and Phoe, part of the opponent group. Based on our presentation as well as the input this evening from staff and the applicant, it is more than apparent, there are many aspects that must be considered with regards. To the lift upgrade application and subsequent final action letter of approval. To wrap up, the significant oversights still exist. A peak ski day for PCMR. While all of Park City suffers from the negative impacts of a peak ski day. The staff and applicant both attempt to circumvent this important factor. Our municipal staff attempts to justify their evasion of a peak ski day by saying that although a peak ski day is referred to and included in the MUP. It is not defined and therefore not applicable. The applicant, on the other hand, offers a different, different explanation. The upgrade plan for the resort is not the applicable standard for lift upgrades. Are either of these explanations correct or acceptable? The eleven percent reduction in parking demand expressed by Fair and Peers due to paid parking is in part attributed to an increased AVO. The applicant's consultant, SE Group, also indicates a reduction in the number of parking spaces required due to this increase. An AVO of two point three increases to two point seven. In SE Group's table, each line item is presented separately on the spreadsheet. And it indicates a double dipping of the parking reduction gained by carpooling in both the AVO line and the eleven percent. Therefore, we question whether this increase has been properly accounted for and if a correction is required. The change in parking numbers that would result is in the hundreds. The current approved PMP relies on the erection of barriers, changing of traffic flow, including improper lane usage. Do you know any individual or other business in Park City who would be allowed to implement such changes in a public right of way? Without a proper review, including an impact study, a public safety analysis, ADA compliance, and so on? How is transit being adjusted to accommodate for this anticipated modal shift due to paid parking? What plans have been formulated and are ready for implementation for a regular ski day? How about for the aforementioned undefined peak ski day? What about those who don't live on or within reasonable and safe walking distance to a transit stop? Where are the plans that support offsite parking such as dedicated transit, expedient lanes, and so on? That would be comparable to the terms of success highlighted but not shown in the Fair and Peers review? An apples to oranges comparison between PCMR and Alta is supposed to put us all at ease. How often do you make the trip to Alta simply to drop someone off? There is basically no other reason other than to go skiing. As Angela pointed out, they have no main street, there's no mark, there's nothing else that people would go there to spend their time in the morning, afternoon, or entire day. Doing while family and friends are skiing. And nothing is being done under the approved plan to add or facilitate additional drop off capability. Lastly, the turnaround in tow, where? In the middle of Lowell, in the middle of Empire, surely not. More likely, it is planned in each of the lots where cars generally would park. Thereby reducing the number of spaces available in each of the surface lots to something less than twelve hundred spaces. So where does the buck stop exactly? We maintain it is way past the time for continuing the applicant to essentially do whatever they please for their operations at the expense of the local community. But perhaps more importantly tonight, we ask the commission to recognize the applicant's disregard for the legal requirements set forth. In the nineteen ninety seven MPD, the nineteen ninety eight DA, and the related exhibit L. We respectfully request you to put a stop to the lift upgrades and uphold our appeal. The buck must stop here, thank you.
All right. I'm going to turn to my fellow commissioners, um. I would start, but I'll let someone else go if anybody wants to, otherwise I'm more than happy to. I'll start, can you, um, Director Milliken, is the, um, consultant still on?
He is, yes.
Can you address the appellants, or the appellants? The discrepancy between the CCC for New Prospector in two thousand eight to McConkey's. I'm sorry, to, to Silverload. They stated that the CCCs changed from New Prospector to Silverload and King Kong to the new King Kong. There was a vast difference. And did you guys look at that and how was that addressed?
He's, uh, Dave, are you able to answer that?
I am here, um, as part of the process, we looked at the calculations that SE did between. The present day and the future, we didn't go back as far as two thousand eight. I would, I could speculate, but I would say that if Vale's mountain manager is there or SE is there. That they did the work and that they. Would, you know, they would be able to give you an accurate answer as far as the past is concerned.
Is there anybody here that could address the discrepancy that was pointed out?
John Sale, planning director for Park City Mountain. I'll try to address it, I didn't see the chart.
And I have to say, going back and verifying what the previous one was to that, but typically with VTF, it's a a simple equation, and it's really about vertical feet times capacity. And the capacity, I think going back to 97, would have been for King Kong or Silverload, a four-pack. So anytime you increase the capacity to a six-pack, you're then increasing the VTM. So that's why you would see a larger number that's happening. And then there's other factors too, certainly with that, but that's primarily the VTM. Does that make sense?
I mean, I'm still just wrapping my head around it. I think, you know, so Prospector was a six-pack.
It was a four-pack before.
Well, I guess based off these numbers, this is a detached six-pack lift type with a carrying capacity of 2,080. Switched to Silverload, an eight-pack, which changes it to 1,820. So you're saying that because you're adding more capacity on the lift, it can change the vertical demand?
It will. So vertical demand is strictly capacity times the vertical feet, right? So if we go from a four-pack, you know, the capacity of the lift is going to increase. So therefore, the vertical demand's going to increase because you're adding, trying to do my math here, but going from four to six, that percentage, right? And there are other factors, you know, part of, and maybe Dave can verify this. Certainly, when you're looking at CCC, you know, it's different than the vertical demand, but there's other factors when we look into this too. It's the ride time, by expanding, you know, to a larger capacity lift, there's actually going to be more people in the air, there's going to be less people in the line. So, you know, you have to take those factors into account too. But that typically does not affect the VTF. It's really just capacity times vertical feet.
Yeah, again, as I said, I would only be speculating, but the other factor that may come into account is that over the last 20 or 30 years, with clients that we've worked with for that long, we've seen that between detachable lifts and the ski, the improvement in ski equipment, that the vertical that skiers ski has increased. You know, at individual ski resorts, has been anywhere from 20 to 40 or 50%. So people are just expecting more, more skiing as well over the last number of years. I don't, as I said, I'm just speculating. I don't know if that's what came into SE's calculations, but that could, could be a factor.
Does that help or?
Not really, no. Let's just be honest, it seems like you could just keep increasing, like your, the size of your lifts and then still make your CCCs adjust accordingly. So I guess, but it's not my expertise to know, so maybe.
The CCC calculation, and Dave could chime into this, it's certainly the vertical, you know, the VTM is part of that, but it's not all of that. So I think what the point was, is that there's these magical numbers that the VTM were increasing. So, you know, back in 97, King Kong, Silverload were four-packs. They got upgraded to six-packs. That's why the VTM number got increased. Now, if you're talking about CCC, then there's multiple things that go into the CCC and that calculation. And that's why sometimes you see something that may happen with some of the lifts that it may not make sense why your CCC is actually going lower, but it's all this equation of wait times, amount of people that are in the chair, and then on the trail. You concur with that, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, the CCC is, basically, it's a mathematical model of the ski area. And take into account the term comfortable is a big part of it. That what it is, is not, like I said, mathematical model, the capacity of the ski area. When, in my, my definition would be that the skiers are all getting as much skiing as they want, and the lift lines are somewhere around the range of 10 minutes long. So it's a comfortable capacity. As I speculated before, if the people are, if you would have the same ski area, except people want to ski 20% more vertical, you can only comfortably handle 20% fewer people. So that could be something that's happened over that 20 or 30-year time period with that lift. Again, I'm, you know, speculating, I'm not looking into SE's head, but that is kind of the definition of the CCC. And as he said to his derived, using the VTF demand, using, if you change skier circulation, you can also change those numbers as well. If one lift is used more to transport people around the area than it is used for return skiing, there's a lot of factors that come into it.
What, I have a question for you, while you're up. Why is Eagle and Eaglelet being removed? Because they are contemplated on the mountain upgrade plan as staying. I just, since you're up here.
Sure. I mean, it would be duplicated, right? I think we certainly realize that with lifts, we're looking at trying to minimize our operators, right? So to run that along with the new Eagle, essentially, we would need twice as many operators. So, you know, when we're doing the planning, we're trying to look at, with lifts, how do we maximize our efficiency, still being able to get people up on top of King Kong? And, you know, right now, Eagle puts you at mid-level where that is. You know, Eagle was really just part of the Olympics at the time. So I think with the replacement, the new Eagle Express, there's really no reason to keep Eagle and Eaglelet. Plus, there, you know, we have found that most people, you know, prefer a faster mode of getting up onto the mountain compared to a fixed grip, so.
My last one is, well, my last one for now, and then I'll let other commissioners speak, but I'm looking at your PMP and these numbers I've seen before. I guess I'm just, I just have a statement, is I still see, we're, just looking at these numbers, the one number that always pops out to me is this transit drop-off. You have 1,800 from transit, 398 from hotel shuttles, and 251 for drop-off and ride-share. And I brought it up, so I'm going to bring this up again. We know for a fact, there's 1,000 kids under the age of 11 going to ski programs there. And that 251 just does not sit well with me, it never has. And it makes me question the remaining numbers that SE Group has put together for this. So I'll leave it at that. I'll let other commissioners speak and circle back.
Well, I feel like maybe we just want to hash out the CCC chart, because honestly, I'm unfamiliar with them. And the nuances of calculations are very new to me, basically, this appeal. So I don't know if anyone else, you want to talk about it as well, or? Okay, I feel like the clarification on that would be great.
Okay, so let me see if I can help out. As, as Mark pointed out earlier, I break a lot of pencils doing math, and this one was really tough for me. I had to go to my calculator. So let's do some basic math, but it's really kind of complicated. CCC equals vertical rise times hourly capacity, times operating hours, times loading efficiency. And then, when you, when you make that number work, you have to divide that number by what's called the weighted vertical demand. The weighted vertical demand is a blended number. So if you are a beginner, if you're an intermediate, if you're an expert, you, they assume you, you ski a lot more as an expert vertically. And of course, Vail has these numbers now. Vail knows every single person on that mountain and what kind of vertical they do. If you're a beginner, I think the, the number that's averaged into this is about 3,000 vertical a day. If you're a pro, the vertical on this, for the black diamond guys that just rip it, skip lunch, and, you know, lap the tram over at the bird, is 30,000 or 40,000 in there. Peter, Dave, did I miss anything? How am I doing?
John?
Yes. But I just want to get the mathematical formula out of the way. For those of you that are obviously a lot smarter and want to, want to go at that.
I think, I think what would be really helpful is to, as, as Commissioner Johnson requested, to address the specific discrepancy that was highlighted by the appellant.
Well, I'm going to get there.
Okay.
I'm going to get there. So, so are we, are, Peter, we? Are you in sync with what I just stated? Oh, Pete's not here, so, Dave, you're on.
That is, that is basically the formula, yes.
Okay, so now, we, we all know the math. So the, the thing that obviously piqued my interest was saying, okay, the terrain hasn't changed. This, you know, intermediate terrain is all there, and the, the numbers have changed a lot. But look at all the other variables in here. And we should really look at it specifically, just doing the math. Putting in the hours, putting in the, the new capacity, all those kind of things. It's, you know, there's the formula for you. So we can all do that. Why it changed? Dave, Dave doesn't know, and Pete's not here, Pete would be the one. Pete's done these CCCs for, or SE Group has done these CCCs for 400 ski resorts around the world. So, I mean, obviously, he's the one that did these 30 years ago, 25 years ago, and we should be able to verify those things without too much problem. It is math. Now, let's go to, let's go to the definition. And I, I came up in researching all this with another definition, but it's very similar to what Dave just described, and it is the optimum number of guests accommodated by a mountain facility at any one time which affords a high-quality recreational experience. And, and this is critical, ensures sound stewardship of the land. So when you're designing these things, you see your, you see your slopes, you see which ones are the expert runs, you see which ones are the beginning runs, and you have a bell curve, like, like anything. And the bell curve is going to have, you know, the, the, the beginners on the far side, maybe what, 7%? And the experts are going to be maybe 10%. And the bell curve for all ski resorts is in the middle. You'll have 80% or so, 75%, unless you go to a rare resort that's like, you know, for rippers only, and you have the only black diamonds in there and stuff. So, so mostly, you have this bell curve. So taking the time to understand this, and the, and the purpose, again, the purpose is for optimum, not capacity, not maximum capacity, you know, but the optimum number of skiers on that land so that they can have an enjoyable, world-class ski experience. That's, that's what, that's what the CCC is. So I help, I hope I helped, because it took me a while. But I think, Dave, you'll agree that that's kind of the purpose and the goal of this, to design a balanced ski resort. And then typically, the bell curve ends up like I just described.
That, that, that's in different words what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and as you said, it, it is the model that, the optimal or the comfortable capacity of the resort.
Perfect. Now, I want to go to one other thing, and just to throw in there, and then I'll throw the mic over to Commissioner Hall. I do find, I do find the MUP definition of a peak day, I think is very specific on page 35 of the MUP. So it says, based upon historical, and this is specifically regarding the, the Park City ski area. Based upon historical skier visit performance records, PCSA anticipates future peak skier days to reach 110% of CCC. To me, that's very specific as to what a peak day is. Furthermore, it states, this policy is acceptable as long as it does not become common practice. Now, nationwide or internationally, CCC numbers are usually allowed to a 25% increase. So that, again, piqued my interest. Why, why would the mountain upgrade plan say the 10% only increase? And it follows right there. It is not believed that the ski area can economically justify a concurrent increase in the size of the visitor service facilities to accommodate the higher ski capacity. So I find that definition very specific, page 35 of the MUP. It's in our, in our package. If you want to ask some questions, you want me to keep going?
Okay, fine.
Well, with all that said, I would like to congratulate Mike on his new position. He's had a tough spot, and he is a class act. I've had to go at him a little bit, and hopefully, nothing personal, but just, you've been a class act all the way through, and congratulations on your, on your new position. With Deidra, welcome. Welcome to Park City. I'm going to go, I'm going to go a little further. You spoke about collaboration. That's the key. That's the word, that's it. And quite honestly, it's been pulling teeth. Getting data from you guys that are data geniuses, that sit there in their cubicles and crank data every day, know every foot of this stuff, has got to stop. We have to, we have to, there is no way, we who sit up here and most of them have two kids and, and put all this time in, can solve this if we don't get the factual data. Mike and I have had a little tussle, he was sharing, sharing, and then they couldn't share because of Broome Field and all that. That's got to end. It's got to end. If we don't have the numbers, there's no way we can go forward. We can know how we got here, but the math and the calculus going forward has to be if we're collaborative. So welcome. All right. What did I have for Gretchen? Why, why do you find that this is not a new lift? Why did you find that this was not a new lift, Gretchen? Why was this not considered a new lift? Why did you find that it was not a new lift?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
The new lift, in this calculations and in, in your findings, you found that this was just a replacement lift.
The new Eagle are we talking about?
Yeah.
The new Eagle was identified in the 1998 mountain upgrade plan with the dash dot that meant that there was a proposed lift to go in there in the future.
So that's, that was your finding, and that's why?
Yeah, that is based on the map in the, in the mountain upgrade plan.
There's, there's multiple comments about how much trees and are going to be removed for this lift to be put in.
Yeah, and, and so the application was reviewed by both the Forestry Board, by our open space manager. And there's a number of mitigation things. There's additional conditions of approval that, that address vegetation.
And give me a total, is it one acre, is it five acres? These people throw different numbers out. How much gross area is being removed?
Lillian's looking.
Okay, thank you.
Just going, sorry, I have no problem with, I believe, for criteria number one in the MUP, that satisfied with the dashed lines for the Exhibit L. My, my concern is really just trying to understand the CCC, because these numbers, there's just so many numbers on all the charts. And I look at, you know, a couple of them, like Jupiter in Town on the original one, have the same CCC on both charts, but then the inputs are different. And then it's really hard to kind of like cross-reference a lot of the other ones, since a lot of them are upgraded or their names have changed. So my proposal would be, if we could have a few minutes to go to the bathroom, and if maybe we could get Dave or Vail to kind of think about explaining that a little bit better to me, that would be wonderful. We could take a five-minute break to the bathroom also.
Well, we're in a really tough spot right now. I don't know how we are going to process the rest of the applications. We've gone way over time.
We've gone way over time. But I also don't want to kick this can down the road. So I think we can take a five-minute break, see if we can get a good answer to that. But I think the commissioners need to, we need to immediately indicate where we are. Because if we're just going to sit here and, you know, talk and then get to a point where we say we need more information, let's just do it now and move through the evening. But if we, I'd like the commissioners just to think about where they're at. And, you know, if we're going to get to a vote tonight, what, you know, where we're at, so that we don't just keep spinning our wheels. So, but let's do that. Let's take a five-minute break. And if somebody can be prepared to answer that immediately.
Sorry, yeah.
And I'm just looking at, you know, being prepared to. Yeah, it's hard to put that on other applicants. All right, let's reconvene because we are short on time. Commissioner Seuser, are you online with us? Just want to confirm your attendance.
I'm here.
Thank you. We're just waiting for City Attorney. Okay, I'm sure Mark Harrington will be stepping in shortly. I think if anyone would like to get up and try to give us a brief address to the last question.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I want to touch on a couple of things. So we are getting SC on the group. John's working on it. I'm going to frame this up, a couple of comments, then John will come up and we'll attempt to address this. Couple of things I'd like to point out. We seem to be trying to chase down some very old information. Lifts that aren't, are not even in place now. The old Silverload lift was a four-passenger lift. And I guess what I would remind all of us, the appellants have the burden of proof. And they've not presented experts' facts. We have two experts on CCC, mountain planning. We've worked through this in great detail. And so we're going to bring SC Group in to join Dave Filias from Ecosign to address that. And lastly, the Planning Director's decision should be upheld on appeal if it is supported by substantial evidence on the record, which is what we presented originally. And so John Sale, I'll ask you to come up, address, I think, the spreadsheet, Commissioner Johnson, that you were referring to, or at least information from that. And then we're going to get Pete and Dave to address it in greater detail. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, Bill, I just wanted to clarify maybe some of the misconception of some of the information. I didn't know if you were working off of this chart. And maybe that's where we weren't following where Silverload or King Kong used to be a four-pack at one point. Because this chart actually shows what they currently are, not what was actually back in 98. So when 98 and when a lot of these CCCs were there, it would have been Silverload and King Kong were four-packs. So that information's not really reflected on this chart. It shows that the current version, which is a six-pack for King Kong, six-pack for Silverload. So that's probably what I was saying. Yeah, these capacity changes from 98 to now, what we're really talking about is a four-pack to a six-pack for King Kong. That was the increase of capacity. What we're talking about for Silverload is actually four-pack to an eight-pack. And that's where you see that increase of capacity then times the vertical feet. That's why you see a larger VTF. But we also have Pete Williams with SC Group on the phone if you have other CCC questions.
No, I think, well, the chart that I'm looking at that was provided to us is from the upgrade, the last upgrade, which I think was, I mean, it's going from New Prospector detached six-pack of carrying capacity of 2,080 to your latest numbers. That is Silverload detached eight-pack at 1,820. But then Commissioner Hall brought up a great point too, because we're looking at this chart that was used previously by you guys. And, you know, Jupiter's the same, but then you have Pioneer going from 810 to 650. And I'm 100% sure that's the same lift I've been skiing on my life. And then it also shows the Thane's lift, again, going from 590 to 390. So we just want clarification on why those are shifting. I think you guys did somewhat of a good job kind of justifying. You painted a good picture, but I think those need to be addressed. I think that's what we're all looking at. Would you guys agree?
Yeah, I think we can give Pete a chance because historically, SC is the one that has put all these together. And there are reasons for this, you know, in the sense of whether it's loading efficiency and other things. But I'll let Pete speak to like Pioneer and some of the other ones that may not make sense.
Great. And any other commissioners that wanted more too? I don't want to.
Yeah, just like we get the charts, we don't get the inputs. And so that's the part that's not described in the package.
Right. Okay, do we have Pete on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me, see me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thanks, everybody. So, I mean, I guess, I guess I'm not sure exactly what the issue is, but there's no 100% direct correlation between the physical aspects of the lift in terms of their vertical rise and their capacity and CCC. So CCC is a balance, if you will, between the uphill and downhill capacity of the, you know, lift and associated runs that you can ski off of it. And so VTFH is a very simple and not particularly meaningful calculation, which is very simply just takes the vertical of the lift and you multiply it by the hourly capacity of the lift. So, you know, for example, VTFH, well, yeah, VTF is always expressed in terms of per hour or per day. So it's VTFH or VTFD. But VTFH, for example, on a lift that has a lot more vertical, is going to have a much higher, you know, like a shorter lift with more vertical could have a much higher VTFH than a longer lift with shorter vertical, right? I mean, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of factors that go into the capacity of a lift and the trails associated with it that aren't going to be picked up in any way by VTFH. So it's not a, VTFH is not a really good at all indicator of the overall, you know, carrying capacity of a lift and the runs that are associated with it. So, you know, when you, the reason that CCC can change from year to year between, you know, a lift that hasn't physically changed, right, is because there's going to be something different about the usage patterns of those lifts, right? And it could be simply higher or lower demand, right? So, you know, for example, if you said, you know, like a lot of lifts did back in the, you know, early 90s, a lot of skiers had like basically parallel fixed grip lifts, right? Because they were trying to increase the capacity coming out of the, coming out of the lift. And we can all talk for days about examples of that. And then in the 90s, they would replace one of them with a detachable. Well, all of a sudden, nobody rode the old one anymore, right? So it's CCC decreased because there was lower demand for it, right? So that's just one example of ways that, you know, CCC can change. You know, once, you know, once other upgrades have happened to the mountain, even though there haven't been any physical changes to the lift, you know, there can be changes to the runs, you can add additional terrain, I mean, whatever. There's multiple ways that that balance can be altered. So, yeah, it's not unusual. In fact, it's, you know, pretty typical that, given the, you know, given the changes that are happening to the mountain in terms of upgrades to other lifts that you might see CCC changing for an existing lift. But yeah, I mean, if you say, okay, the VTFH of this lift is going to be increased because we're going from a six-pack to an eight-pack, well, that's true. But there's no like direct correlation to an increase in CCC because that calculation is taking into account all kinds of things well beyond the actual vertical and hourly capacity of the lift. Does that help at all? I'm not sure.
Pete, if you could specifically, discrepancy, that would be really helpful. The discrepancy that the appellant pointed out between the carrying capacity presented and their calculations, that would be so helpful.
Specifically for Thane's and Pioneer?
I think she's talking about Eagle or King Kong.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that, talking about Eagle?
So.
Maybe I'm not hearing quite clearly. You want me to address the discrepancy between Eagle, existing Eagle and the new Eagle lift?
I won't be able to repeat how the appellant stated the discrepancy, but.
If anybody wants us to revisit this for clarification purposes, and I also question why the Planning Director is now advising the applicant and people are allowed to come up here and answer everything but what you guys are asking.
Or just sit and talk from the audience. People are being able to do that, right?
All right, let's just, let's, I know, let's all just bring it down a notch.
Let me address this, I guess, of why things change. And it's like very similar to with the proposed new Eagle. So we looked at that. And then with Three Kings, we were like, okay, there's not going to be as many people riding Three Kings, right? So we would adjust that capacity because, you know, we don't think there's going to be 100% ridership on Three Kings once we build the new Eagle Express. I think when you look at the CCC for, you know, 1998, a lot of these were planned lifts and these were the maximum capacities, right? That were planned, not necessarily, you know, if they were planning a new four-pack or six-pack, what was actually built later on may not meet that exact capacity until we know the speed, until we know everything else that goes into it. So, you know, you should probably look at the 98 capacities as, once again, a master plan is a planning tool. And this CCC of 13,700 was the max, but it's still a planning tool. And, you know, 25 years later, there are going to be variables on how things were built and what they run and technology and other things like that. So that's why probably some of these are not matching the exact ones that were, you know, shown in the 98 master plan.
Okay, thank you for your answer. I'm going to do this. I'm going to turn to Director Milken if you have anything to say. Then I want to get Ms. Macheta to get up and briefly just restate what the commissioners are kind of echoing. And then, and then we're going to try to see if there are any other issues. And I'm trying to continue to move forward. Do you have anything to add?
No, I was just trying to address Commissioner Johnson's question. And we noticed that the CCCs from 98 are the maximums. And that's all I wanted to point out, that those weren't the actual from 1998, but the maximums. And as John Sales pointed out, they're kind of part of the master plan. And so that could have been where the discrepancy. I was just trying to provide information to answer the question.
Okay. Briefly, I'm sorry, but I know you can do it.
Super briefly. So this started with questions, right, about the discrepancies in numbers and specific to certain lifts. Initially, I'm sorry, Dave, Dave from Ecosign, okay, said he wasn't sure about the original numbers. The original numbers are the MUP. And again, that's what we have to go off of. So while it is possible that technology and usage and things might change the myriad numbers, right, that Commissioner Kenworthy talked about, and then there are. and then there are blended numbers. What doesn't change is the 13,700 max CCC for the resort. So you can manipulate and move things around as much as you want underneath, but you can't exceed that. Now, as far as some of these vertical demand numbers, this is where I'm just really not appreciating this circuitous and indirect address. There's VTF, okay, which is a factor on here. What we chose to focus on is the vertical demand. It's one of the simplest numbers on here. The CCC does involve a lot more, it gets more complicated. But as we stated in our presentation, these are inversely proportional. And the vertical demand is directly tied to terrain. So if the terrain doesn't change, you can't just change that number out of thin air. And the reason it appears to be manipulated is to achieve reduction in the CCCs to stay under this cap. And if you don't understand all of these numbers, and clearly none of the experts do today, nor does John Sales, then I think that alone, you have to grant this appeal. You have to force someone to, to present accurately on these, which nobody in this room can do today. Thank you.
Okay, I'll give the, anyone, one last opportunity to respond to those comments? And if the commissioners have any follow-up?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from Pete on the, on the weighted vertical demand. I am leaning towards what the applicant is saying that how, you know, how is the terrain number changing? When you've blended out the resort and you've come up with that number, you haven't changed any double black diamond, single black diamond, blues, intermediate blues, have you? Since you originally did this?
Yes, thank you.
Well, may have, over time. But I think it's, I just think it's critical. So we've, there was an expectation that we rely on independent experts for CCC. We did that. They tied back to the current state and the impact from new lifts. They've presented that and a number of times we've had conversations with staff about that to verify it. We've had follow-up conversations with them. The two leading experts in, in the world, frankly, on this topic, independent of us in, in terms of Ecosign, have provided these answers. And I don't know how to ask them differently or provide additional information. We met the obligation to provide the information. Anyone can come say, you know what, we don't buy it. We think they're wrong. And if, if you're an appellant doing that, then you have to provide the detailed information to dispute it from a consultant, from an expert. We've, we've brought an expert to the table to answer these questions. Pete is, if, if you would indulge us, I think Pete is on the line again to, to help with this. Chair, is that okay?
Yes, yes, Pete, I'll allow you to make a final statement and then we're going to have to, we're going to have to move. Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that actually, vertical demand number is the most difficult part of the, the calculation, not, not the simple part. The, the simple part is the vertical supply, which is, you know, based off of that VTFD number. And the, the vertical demand is a really very complicated calculation that takes into account all the existing terrain as a, as a portion of the calculation, yes, of course. But there are going to be numerous other portions of that calculation that go into calculating what that vertical demand is, such as skier speeds, lift line waiting times, you know, the, the amount of time spent on the lift itself, which of course will change depending on lift technology and lift speeds when things change, those types of things. So calculating the, the vertical demand is, is definitely the more, more complex part of that, that half of that equation.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to try to push this forward. So I just want to turn to the commissioners, other than the issue with the questions on the comfortable carrying capacity, everything that's been presented to us. Do the commissioners have any other things that are holding us up other than that at this moment? Okay.
I have, I have a couple of questions about the transformative parking management plan and the reservation system and the, the parking at Munchkin Lot. And so if I could throw out a couple of questions about those, that would be great. It, it, it's my understanding that only 90, I was wondering if Val could just tell us how many employees they, how many of their employees will continue to park at the base even with the 90 parking at Munchkin Lot? How many then employees, will they, are they intending to park at the base?
The number can vary day to day. What is important, I think, is we've agreed to move 90. And so that's 90 additional parking places available in the base area. That mitigation, along with the others, exceeds any possible increase in parking demand with the lift upgrades. So I'm hesitant to pin a number that it's, you know, 110 beyond the 90 or it's 11. But the commitment was let's move 90 out of that parking area to Munchkin.
Okay, and then a lot of, a lot of the, the 11% reduction that's anticipated, given the fee, the parking fee and the reservation system, what will the parking fee be and how far in advance can reservations be made for parking? Have those details been worked out yet? Because I, I, I find the conditions of approval a little lacking in details. And those are the kind of things that I think, I just want to know where, where, where Vale is on working out those details, if this is intended to be implemented for next season.
So those two details we have not worked out intentionally. We're continuing to, to look at how that works best. A lot of research that we've been doing. We certainly will continue to work with the city to maximize that impact. But that, yeah, that, that should be a work in progress and, and it is.
Okay. Susie, did you have one other? At least you're getting your questions out.
That's, that's all, that's all the questions I have, thanks.
Okay. All right. So I think all the questions from the commissioners have been filled out, so here's.
No, no, no.
You have more?
Yeah, timeout, timeout. So we hear from the community and we hear that we have a certain focus that we have to stay on. And I'm going to go back to welcoming Deidre and saying we have to be, you know, transparent. The original CCC on this mountain was 9,900-ish. Okay, today, the CCC, if we grant it or deny the appeal, is going to go to 12,800. Okay, off the top of my head, that's 3,000 people. Forgive me, Mark, I'm not doing the numbers exactly. That's 3,000 skiers, right? Throw in your 10%. Indeed, that's what we're talking about. And we need to be transparent here tonight. And we need to tell you what is the cap? What is the cap? We have the largest growing state in the country. We have the largest growing county in the country. We have a drive-to market of over a million, two people. And we have a mountain with a CCC number that talks about stewardship. You guys always talk about it, you do a lot of good things, all right? But the, the cap on the mountain has to be a COA for me, the cap. What is it? We danced around it? No, no more. What is the cap? What is the cap on the mountain? Are you still looking for the 25% increase that internationally is acceptable? And yet, counter to what our MUP says, are we going to go with the 10%? What is the cap? Number one, COA missing. Number two, COA missing, is how do we as a city monitor you? Everybody on Main Street gets monitored. And what are we monitored on? Our peak days. You know what happens during Sundance? Fire chief comes by. The police chief comes by with the police. They all have clickers on our occupancy. And then what happens is the UDABC comes by if you have a liquor license. And this happens on every peak day during, during the winter, two businesses here. And what happens when Park City Live is over capacity? Chief Carpenter walks in there and throws 300 people out or closes them. So those three things we need to understand. Otherwise, you know, we're wasting a ton of time. And I don't see those three things. So those three things, let's go back and let's do, and let's understand where the traffic comes from. We, we, we grinded it out and we know 70% of the people parking at the base resort in Park City come from 224, okay, 70%. If you talk to our expert who's been on the record, we don't have anywhere near the capacity, the occupancy for collection parking lots out there. So we're talking about, right now, you're going to say, oh, Commissioner Kenworthy stayed in your approval and approved this. But I just had a guy tell me, and I have no idea who he is or where he lives, tell me somebody's blown a gun on him in our community. This is what we have to solve. Wait a second, Deidre's been here eight days.
Yes, yes. So you're correct, Commissioner. I'm going to ask respectfully that we only solve the points of the appeal today. And having said that, we've provided information to the city that I think answers the question. We have at no point exceeded CCC, let alone CCC plus 10%. It was mentioned that I was, perhaps dishonest, it may have been a stronger term, about when I appeared earlier this winter before city council, and I made this public statement before, that at no point this winter did we set a daily visitation record. That is true. I still stand by that. Not a single daily record was set this year. And so I can't solve or address 2030 visitation and how many international travelers may come. I certainly want to do the work on it. We constantly do the work on it. But what we know today is that we can significantly enhance the experience for everybody coming to our mountain. And we can manage the numbers that are there today and the less than 300 additional people due to the lift upgrades.
Okay, I believe everything you're saying, I believe everything you're saying except for, I'm going to point out. And I got numbers this afternoon. And those numbers showed, especially in December, that you had 40% of your terrain, your CCC open. 40%. And I'm giving you a break, sometimes it was less than 40% of the terrain. And yet you had 80%, 85% of your CCC. You, that's not good stewardship, Mike. 80% of the CCC number is skiing on 30% of the terrain. And we all are just talking about how important this terrain number is and how difficult it is.
Yep. So what happens in a period like that, as we all know, a very severe drought. We had lack of terrain.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking for an excuse. I'm just saying, world-class experience? Come on. You know it and I know it, and the impacts on the city.
Yeah, so fewer visitors during less terrain. And, yeah, that can happen on occasion. It happens when, you know, we go on lightning holes.
But that's up to you, that's up to you. You have to control that. You cannot put that burden on the city.
We're not putting any burden on the city.
30% open CCC terrain and 80% occupancy is a huge burden on the city.
I, I, I don't, I don't even know how to respond to that, Commissioner. I, I don't know the point that you're making.
You have people that can't get on the mountain because the lift lines are so incredibly long and it backs up our city. I mean, it's obvious the point I'm making.
I, I don't think that that's the fact.
It's not a fact?
It, it certainly, if lines are long, it impacts the experience of our guests, which is damaging to us and to the, obviously, the guest experience.
These people are telling you they're coming.
They're backing up into the city.
There are people who are telling you they're taking buses to go to the other resort to get on and they're going to get on the bus and leaving and come back. That definitely backs up the city.
All right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to interject because I don't think this is, I don't think we're being productive at this point. We're way over time. We don't have time to finish the rest of our applications. We're not going to solve this, right? I think the questions have been poised by the commissioners. I have not given my comments. But I, I'm going to be brief. And then I'm going to turn to the commission to do, to, to, to cast a vote. And at this point, I'm assuming that we are going to request additional information. So I want the commissioners to think of how you're going to make that motion. Or, so we have four options, deny an appeal, we can grant the appeal, we can continue, we can take under advisement and continue to a date certain. I think, you know, it's frustrating to have to squeeze this in. I, I think we could spend a whole nother evening doing this. We, we did try setting this up on an independent night and it just didn't work for everybody. So we're doing the best we can. But I will conclude by giving my comments. I will say I think all sides were represented well. I think all sides were giving equal amount of time and the ability to get their points across. In my position, having heard the arguments and looking at what is in front of us, which is an appeal, I personally do feel that the burden is on the appellant. And I don't, I don't think that I was shown tonight any error in what has been done. I agree with speakers Thomas Jacobson, Adam Strong, Alex Batwinski, Richard Joffa. We have multiple professionals that have looked at this independently. It's conditioned heavily. I, and then we can, we can get into the details of a comfortable carrying capacity. But I am not a professional. I don't want to be and I never will be. And so I have to rely on the professionals, not, not what, there may be a discrepancy here or there, but these professionals are telling us that we are not at the 1,307, you know, 13,700. And I believe that. And I believe that they are giving us their honest opinion. We can argue about why it was this at a certain time, but currently this is where we're at. You know, it is a shift in, in the parking, but I think it was always intended to have paid parking. And I, and, and as I look at the staff report, I look at all the data that has been given, the legalities, the arguments. I, I would deny the appeal. Just going through my notes to see if I've kind of hit my main points. Yeah, I would deny the appeal. I think that we can ask for more information and there, the professionals will come back and educate us and we'll spend another evening. But I, I, I believe that their analysis is correct overall. So that's where I'm at. I know that I'm probably the only one that's in that position up here right now. And with that being said, I don't think there's a whole lot more we're going to get done tonight. So I'll turn to the commission to make a motion and I will cast a vote and then move on with our evil.
Sorry, you need to either take commission comments and take a motion or you need to recognize people at the dais, people just can't stand.
I didn't, I just looked up.
I know, just I'm preempting because I, I think you need to ascertain where the commission is in terms of whether they want to make comments towards where they are positionally or towards more information. And then you can, you can entertain further comments as you, you deem appropriate at this point.
Okay, commissioners?
I, I think this needs to be continued. I, I think this needs to be continued. I definitely need more information. I find details lacking in the parking mitigation at 11%. And I think, you know, we, I still am waiting to see how much terrain is, is going away on this forested terrain. Did we find out that number?
We did, 5.5 acres.
So it is 5.5 acres and you're considering that as a new lift, even though it's disturbing 5.5 acres of vegetation? You're considering that a replacement list? I'm sorry.
We are looking at it as it was already in the mountain upgrade plan. And then they're just putting the lift that was already identified.
And I'm going back to the, and the lift that I saw wasn't quite the same through that forested area that was on the, was on the map. Are you saying that that green line goes all the way through to the area where it lands today, where it's proposed?
Yeah, it's almost identical. There was, that, William could pull it up again. Where they are proposing the new eagle is more or less identical to where it was in the mountain upgrade plan on that map.
So I would still ask for a continuation so that I could look at it more deeply. But certainly the parking mitigation just doesn't add up for me right now. Also with the business model that's being.
I, I just, I think more clarity is going to be helpful. And that's why I said at the beginning, because like we need the commission to delineate not just objection, but objection tied to criteria. So if you're finding deficiency in the criteria.
Finding deficiency in the mitigation for the water sewer shuttles mitigation and parking mitigation. The, I'm still wanting to see, to see if this is considered a new lift or a replacement lift. I do want to understand why the, the weighted vertical demand has shifted because I do want to see how those terrains have shifted over the years. And certainly that number that P choosing, he should be able to give me tonight so that I can plug in the other numbers and see how these things supposedly have changed. The terrain issues, I do, I, I, I find an issue with the, if the number, whatever number is being used right now differs greatly from the previous number for the blended terrain analysis.
Okay. Just to clarity, the lift in question is not considered new or old. It is an upgrade because it's in the mountain upgrade plan. The lift is considered an upgrade.
Okay, and why did you think, why did you find that there is no definition for the peak days as I read out of the mountain upgrade plan?
That there, I said there wasn't a definition of the peak ski days that's defined in the land management code that is concurrent, is the same as we see in the mountain upgrade plan that we see in other documents. We don't have a universal definition of peak ski day.
I think that needs to be defined clearly. That's one of the main issues. That is the main issue. Exactly. And that, that way, we're, we're all working together. We all know what we're up against. And it's called out many times that we use the peak ski day.
I'll be brief. I do agree that the burden is on the appellant. It's a tough burden to meet. I think that criteria for the lift location has been met, in my opinion. I also believe that the criteria six is met. The condition of approval number 15 specifically really gives me great comfort in knowing that there is a biannual review by the director that can impose additional conditions and operational changes if the parking mitigation plan results in ongoing adverse impacts. I really just have some clarification for the CCC because we don't have the formulas on the tables. I feel like that could potentially be answered now, but I understand that it would be love for the questions.
Any, anything else from the commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Sussar.
So I agree that we need a continuance for, for the clarity on the peak ski day and the CCC issues. And I, I also found, I also think that the conditions of approval need to, that, that, they need to be tightened up to adequately address the impacts. And, and, and to, you know, to put some teeth into them because, and, and Senior Attorney Harrington wanted some details on that. So I'll just go through a couple of, a couple of ones because I don't want to go through all of them. But for instance, find fact number 18, criteria number five. I don't think it's been met because significant vegetation has not been identified. Condition of approval number five, I, I, I think, I find too vague because, because the impact on the open space should be determined prior to approval. Condition of approval number 10 should clarify if the old lifts are to be moved off-site. Condition of approval number 13 is adequate because overflow parking should be addressed in this approval rather than left to Summit County and the school district. I'm, I'm, I, I think it's great that we have a contract, they have a, Vail has a contract in place now with the school district. But I'd like to understand how overflow parking will be impacted or addressed in the event construction commences at the high school. I think we need more clarity on condition of approval number 19 regarding the spaces at Munchkin Lot and, and the reservation system. And how, and how and when we could expect details on how those, how the reservation system will operate. And the spaces at the Munchkin Lot, I'm curious as to why Richardson Flat is not being included in this plan given the, the intention of Vail to use it at, at some point for the, all of the, all the employees at the base. So I'd like clarification on that and, and some more, just more details on, on these conditions of approval. I really find them inadequate, particularly you should approve number 17. The, to suggest that, you know, Vail is now proposing adequate neighborhood mitigation. I, I, I don't, we had cops that the taxpayers in the town were paying for on every corner around the base resort and weren't being reimbursed. The town, to my understanding, has not been reimbursed by Vail for those, that, for all that extra police presence. And I think that we need to, that Vail needs to really address how this reservation and parking fee will impact the neighborhoods and have a plan in place to enforce and, and, and you know, provide that enforcement. So those are, those are a few of my specific concerns and things that I think believe need to be clarified. I'm all for, you know, the, the upgrades. I just think that the conditions of approval particularly need to be tightened up and, and be more detailed. And, and, and a couple of clarifications on the CCC and the peak ski day would be great too. Thanks.
Do you have anything to add, Commissioner Johnson?
Um, no, I don't. I mean, I honestly, I, I'm okay with everything. I think that the only real qualm I have is with criteria one, the CCC on, I think the appellant brought up a, you know, they brought up the discrepancy. I do think the burden is on them. I agree with you, but this also is a great opportunity for you guys to clarify. And we can continue this to another date rather than, than make an action that may, you know, affect, you know, this happening. Because I think, I think it's generally a great thing that's happening. I just think that there's a, they brought up a good discrepancy. I don't think anyone really addressed it other than kind of, I think it would be a pretty basic clarification between, you know, the, the table that was provided with New Prospector versus Motherload and the Eagle comparison. So that's it.
Well, Commissioner Chairman Phillips, Mark Harrington, Senior City Attorney. I'm just trying to help you isolate remaining issues if possible. So is there any other commissioner that shares Commissioner Kenworthy's concern about consistency with the mountain upgrade plan? Or do the rest of you agree that staff had the authority to consider the, the administrative CUP because of consistency with, that the proposed lift was in the air, in the mountain upgrade plan?
Yes, as with the development agreement and the MUP, I believe that, and historical approvals, that the planning director does have the authority and should approve if the criteria one through six are met.
Correct. Is there a majority in agreement with that?
I, I agree with that.
But, but Commissioner Hall, if, if you don't have clarity on the, on the CCC, that you don't know, that, that, right, you don't know if it's.
If criteria one through six are met, then the planning director does have the authority as stated in the DA and the MUP.
But have you found that?
I only had questions regarding the CCC per criteria one. I felt that criteria six was met and the first part of criteria one was also met.
What do you think about the definition of a peak ski day and defining the actual capacity at the mountain and the monitoring of that? You don't find that is part of the CCC?
Well, that is part of the CCC, yes. On page 35, I also had that noted before this meeting, so.
Yeah, I just.
But I include that as part of my CCC question. Should we move to a date certain?
Where are we? What else is going to help, Mark? What are we, what am I missing here?
Well, I'm just trying to get direction for staff so we have clarity on expectation for the next meeting. Mr. Gore is still at the podium. He needed to decide whether you're taking additional comment or not.
I would, I would also like to say that on the lease for the parking, I'd like the detail of what it means 30, 300 to 600 participants. I'd like to know how many stalls are available and what your anticipated AVO is out there.
And I just want to, and I want to try and target whether we're, whether the commission agrees that the staff found based on the consultant's review that there was a marginal impact, if any, to parking by virtue of the nominal increase to the CCC because of the ski lift improvements. And therefore, we didn't look at peak ski day as the definitive issue because that, that wasn't what was driving the parking demand of this application. And the peak ski days, from the staff's perspective, were not being impacted by these two lift upgrades. And so if you are disagreeing with that and you want further broader information, you, you need to delineate that.
Okay, so I do disagree with it. And the 70% of people that are coming off of 224 and coming up there, 70% of 12,500 with 10% on top of is a large number that has to have required.
Which is a ski distribution number.
How are you going to address that?
Not a peak day number. So what I just want to point out is as you go back and review these documents, I encourage you to read the MUP very carefully because there's a discussion in there about the direct correlation or lack of correlation between your maximum ski days, or your peak ski days, as John has pointed out in the defined of when a peak threshold is exceeded and, and the parking maximization. And this is bad news for your other project because it, it validates where John is on your other project review. But what it does show is that the, the day, the, the day ski traffic that the staff is looking at mitigating in the operational plan is not necessarily related to those peak days. So if staff can come back and show that, will that be helpful in, in their analysis? Or do, are you strictly focused on as it relates to the CCC cap not being exceeded and you want to nail that down?
I'm also looking at the report and thinking that these resorts that have been used, Alta and Beaver Creek are not comparable. I think they're flawed. I think they're not anywhere close to what we represent here in our town.
Well, then I think the, the chair will have to determine whether you have a majority that supports the finding of rejection of certain evidence or not as in a line with Mr., with Commissioner Kenworthy or whether you have a different analysis through the majority. Because we, we just can't serve competing, we, we have to know what we're coming back with. And if we're modifying conditions of approval to better latch down the measurements of CCC as they relate to future violations of a, of a new peak day number, we, we can do that. But that's very different than going back evidentiary and second guessing expert testimony regarding the impacts on parking as it relates to lift upgrades. And I'm just trying to see which path you want staff to come back on. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And I don't know how to rein that in other than to turn to the commissioners. I, I'm feeling like the majority at this point, and also keeping in mind we are missing one member. We're, we're, we're close. We just need more information on the, the CCC numbers. But I'm going to turn to you two because you two are kind of.
Yeah, I, I felt like if I had also been reviewing this, if I was the planning director reviewing this for administrative CUP and independent consultants, professionals provided me with this data, I would also look at the bottom line and rely on it. I'm just now concerned with like conflicting new data points and not understanding the formulas, how to rectify different numbers. And I just want to make sure that we get that correct. And I'm happy to listen to discrepancies be clarified now or at a later point. And that's really my only issue. And should those bottom line numbers be met? Then I do feel that criteria one would be met, which means all the criteria would be met, in my opinion, and that an administrative CUP was authorized to be done.
Well said. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in line with Commissioner Hall. That's where I'm stuck.
And I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied as it has been presented. So I, I need nothing more. And so you have the different positions. Does that give you enough? And I don't know if Commissioner Sussar wants to state one last time.
No, I think I have Commissioner Sussar's comments on adjustments to the conditions of approval that she's requested. We can work with those. So I think staff will come back to modify those conditions of approval. We will look at addressing the concerns regarding the specificity of the CCC. We will not give you additional evidence regarding additional studies or additional resorts. And we will focus on clarifying the CCC analysis that was provided and then modifying the conditions of approval with, with the suggestions that have been made so far.
I, I think it would be, Mark, I think it would be also helpful if, if staff specifically addressed the discrepancy that was raised by the appellant and, you know, and spoke directly to that. Just, just so we could all have our, you know, have that very clear. Thanks.
Okay. I'm, Mr. Gore's been patiently waiting at the dais, so I'll, I'll go ahead and give you the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Chair Phillips. I'll be brief and I, I feel some of these were directed at me anyway, so I appreciate the opportunity. Certainly wanted to clarify a, a pretty rough comment about us not paying for the partnership we had with the city for police protection that was paid some time ago. And it was an agreement we had with the city. There was never any issue with us not paying it or paying it timely. That has been paid in full. So let me cut to the chase here. Certainly appreciate the thoroughness of the evening, the feedback. Just to reset around a couple of things. We do have a very narrow construction window to build lifts. We've been at this going on seven months. We started in November and we've provided materials as requested. We met eight times with city staff to. with city staff to review the application, provide additional information. So in addition to the meetings, we've had with the city to discuss the application line on review process prior to submitting the application. And we had the four plus length hour meeting originally for the A C U P. Given the, just the timing and the resource it is, it takes to build lifts in the short season, it just isn't tenable for projects like this to go this many months. It will kill lift projects every time. And so respectfully, I would ask, is there any path forward this evening? Perhaps bifurcating the project. Silver load seems to be largely acceptable. It seems the eagle is driving some of the concern. Is that a possibility that the commission would consider bifurcating the projects, letting the silver load lift go forward under an A C U P? And then we continue the eagle portion of the project and continue to work on providing you additional information?
It's a good question. I'll turn to the commissioners to answer that. Anyone want to?
Go ahead. Commissioner Johnson, I know you want to.
No, I, I understand where you're getting at. I, I just don't know how to answer it, to be honest with you. I mean, well, it, it would be unfair for me to say, based on my comment, that I'm asking for, you know, the discrepancy to be addressed when I, when it's, if one were the same, I would say yes. I, yeah.
Get, get, come back to me.
Okay, yeah. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. It was fun, though.
I respect the position you're in, but I can't do it. I can't bifurcate it.
Nor can I.
I feel like in more of a, the, the timing issue, like if, if someone could really just talk to, we have data points on this chart and data points here. I feel like it's a simple explanation of formula that I just don't understand. And then I could move forward. And I think Bill could. And I think then we have a majority of people who would move forward if we can just have this discrepancy between the CCC numbers that were presented us tonight that we didn't have and the CCC numbers that are on the table in our packet. Because I do feel that that is, you know, it kind of hinges on that to me. And I do understand, like when I was looking at this and I see the three fifty for Jupiter and the, you know, the town lift, you know, with the two seventy, and it's the same, but the inputs are different. And I'm trying to figure out how to, you know, understand that because in theory, these were all numbers into the formula, but then they should change because then the vertical demand changed. So, okay, we're taking those ones out. Those ones weren't recalculated, is my understanding from what Director Milligan said. If we could just get some clarification on how we get to these numbers, that'd be great.
Is it worthwhile getting Pete on again?
Well, I feel, yeah. I mean, my, my understanding was that I didn't have my, like, and Laura had the same question as well. Like, we didn't get that discrepancy. Why are their number, those numbers so different?
And I think it would help if Angela repeated the discrepancy specifically so that Val could address it head on.
I mean, Vale can also, we all have the same documents. The charts come from, so the original numbers are in the MUP, right, which we're, we've all agreed we're relying on.
Yes.
Then there is, based upon SE group's input, okay, there is, hold on, let me, let me just pull this out here. There are additional CCC, sorry, ECOSIGN, okay, CCC tables from PCMR and SE, right? These are referenced, both of them, one on top of the other in the ECOSIGN report. So we pulled out the lifts in question, Silver Load, King Con, and the Eagle replacement. And what we showed is that from the original MUP to one table called the existing conditions, there are discrepancies, and then there are further discrepancies with the proposed upgrades. Our, what we maintain is that there should not be discrepancy, and not such significant discrepancy in the vertical demand where the terrain hasn't changed. And no, you already gave these professional consultants and Vale opportunity to address this. They cannot. And I know that you've got to be out of here, you said, at nine thirty, Commissioner Hall. I don't understand what we're doing. If you want more information, can get you, you guys can go put it all together. You've got three consultants to work with. I mean, and that's really all we're asking for, too, is if you can resolve this issue, and then it changes everything. But if you can't, then there is no reason to certainly deny the appeal.
Yeah, the challenge is, it's, it's a false narrative. There isn't an issue. And this is information that was created without a consultant, without an expert. We don't know the basis of it. The, the city's expert has attempted to answer the question and clarify.
It's in your exhibit.
Okay, let's not interrupt each other at this point. Okay, I, again, I, I honestly take a lot of responsibility for where we're at tonight. I don't know how this happened. I do. I, I mean, I really do. I, I, I always come in thinking that I can manage better. And I, I feel like I've let everyone down and that we're here at nine thirty, to be honest with you. So I think, I think we just need to, to, to get a motion from the commissioners at this point. I don't think we're going to resolve it respectfully.
I would just ask, then respectfully, might as well take it to a vote.
That's a fair, a fair question. So.
I'm not, I'm not ready to vote. I want to continue this. I want to make a motion to continue to a date certain that is comfortable for the team over there.
I second that.
Mark, if we move to continue, may we have a special meeting prior to our two week out meeting that's already full?
Yes, the commission has the ability to, to do that.
And move it to a date certain that is soon because our agendas are already packed.
Yeah.
So we'd have a special meeting, like next week or something?
Uh, is there time for noticing for all of that and everything, though?
Well, if we, if we do it on a date certain, then it's noticed.
I believe we could get this on to the July thirteenth meeting.
Given how long this one was, I maybe suggest that we do a special one beforehand.
I, I will say that it should be very narrowed to what we're asking, though. So I don't think that.
I have one question.
Yeah. And so I don't. And, and honestly, if I can't keep it, at the next one, I'm going to resign from the position. Somebody, we need somebody else that can then, you know?
Can we do a meeting next week?
No, we need to be able to, um, I don't think we can turn it, we need to publish, we need to do a staff report. I don't think we can turn it around that quickly.
Noticing requirements and everything, too.
Well, noticing is not an issue because you can continue to a date certain. So there is no noticing issue.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And your hearing is closed, so it's purely a scheduling matter for you. You want to do it?
I, I.
In twenty-four hours, you can do it in twenty-four hours.
I will do whatever it takes to get this as soon as the parties feel they can answer our questions.
I agree. And I will join on Zoom at a random time or day.
I would as well. I think that's a great suggestion, Commissioner Hall.
We do June fifteenth?
That might be tough for me.
So are we talking about a special meeting next Wednesday?
As soon as possible. Yeah. So if that's when you feel.
I just don't want to put a huge burden on my staff. That means we're going to have to publish it in two days. Um. If we did, what do we have the following? We're going to try and make it for Wednesday next week, if that works for you.
Does that work for you, Mike?
Yes.
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Chambers? Okay, I move that we move for, sorry, it's getting late. I don't like these late meetings. It's really, oh, there we go.
So did, did Mr. Commissioner Kenworthy's motion fail for a second? Because I think he made him, he made.
Uh, he, you know, he did make a motion. I didn't know if it was, if it was.
To a date certain, it's comfortable for.
But was it, was it all?
But I'm just, I'm just trying to either have him withdraw and have Commissioner Hall make a specific motion or have him clarify that it's still Wednesday.
Go for it.
Do you want to amend your motion?
What's the date and time, Gretchen?
Wednesday, the thirteenth at five thirty.
I move that we continue this item to Wednesday, June fifteenth at five thirty.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kenworthy and a second by Commissioner Sussar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, thanks, everyone. I know it was very difficult for, I'm sure, all of us, so.
Um, I can go, um, I can join virtually. Give me a minute. I will log on to Zoom.
Okay.
And I will be able to join for the two items, but I do need to physically be home.
Okay. So just so everyone is aware.
I think, I think we should stop meeting at nine thirty as planned. That's my personal.
Okay. Um, I, I would prefer that we at least give the other applicants some time, but that's, that's my preference.
I'm not going to stand for a little bit. This happened.
Yeah, I think the applicant was continuing because you ran out of time last time. So you're running into a due process issue in terms of not hearing them. So I just, unless they're going to acquiesce, I think you should at least start the hearing. Just this, just the first one and then give notice to the second two now that you're going to request to continue.
I'm sorry, I'm, you know, a lot of background. So could you just, could you just repeat that? Can everyone just kind of keep quiet? It's hard to hear.
Yeah, I'd recommend you start the Washington School Inn matter because you.
Sorry, I'm going to be on.
Hit your mute button in the top left corner.
Okay. Uh, I'm just going to quickly announce that Commissioner Hall is transitioning virtually. We're going, and, and we are going to hear the next application. And are you suggesting that we?
Then she, you, you will not have a quorum for the last, the last two items. So she's going to listen for this one and, but then she has to get off. So you will, you can proceed with Washington School Inn, but I think you should give notice to the others that you have to continue, take a motion to a date certain and request that the planners and those items get to those applicants and try and get a date to bring to you. So when the time comes, you can have a date certain.
Okay.
Phillips, I can stay on later if I'm on Zoom. So I can stay through the other items if there is quorum.
So she's saying that she can stay.
Okay.
The other commissioners, can you stay if through?
You know, what time is it going to go to? I mean, let's.
I'm pretty sure they're all going to be brief. I, I was, I was informed that the Washington School feels like they can get through it pretty quick. I will say this would be the first time in my ears if we've not gotten through all the applications or at least given them a, a minute to speak. So I would hate to see that after some of them sitting here all night. So. We're going to definitely move forward with the next, I think, I think there's some discussion going on. So we're, we're going to wait to hear back from some of the applicants.
What's that?
Yeah.
Let's see what they're going to say.
I'm sorry, we're just taking a quick pause here for a moment.
Okay, I know Mark stepped down, so I'm just waiting for him to.
I think we're full. Okay. We're going to press forward. Now for the second item on our agenda. Well, you guys have had, yeah, I, I, again, thank you for your patience. And I know you understand the difficulties. So go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Planning Commission and members of the public. I am Bron Seabright. I'm the planner who's been assigned to the application for five forty-three Park Avenue, Washington School Inn Minor Hotel Conditional Use Permit. I have a brief presentation I'll run through, just a couple of slides afterwards. I will hand it over to the applicant representative, Wade Budge, and then we can continue on with the public hearing portion of this item. So just as a reminder, this conditional use permit application is a request by the applicant to go from the existing bed and breakfast use to a minor hotel conditional use permit. This is located in the landmark building in the historic district, which enables it to request this minor hotel conditional use permit. And the purpose of this request, according to the applicant, is to expand the use from the current uses of bed and breakfast to allow overnight guests to invite and host non-resident guests for dining or small gatherings. And so as a reminder, this is located between Park and Woodside Avenue. It composed of two lots, the main lot and has the historic school itself, and then Lot thirty-four, which is largely a landscape lot. And it is surrounded on three sides by residential housing in the HR One zoning district. This is going to be the fourth meeting on this item. We've had two work sessions last year in April and November, and then we had a very brief public hearing on May twenty-fifth, where it's continued to this date. And the purpose of this meeting and the purpose of the staff report that we provided is to follow up on the questions from the November tenth meeting. This is also an opportunity for the applicant to update the commission on their revised management plan and parking study and overall proposal. And then commission can then conduct a public hearing and planning commission can give or take action or give direction to staff on the application. And so since the November work session, the planning commission asked us specific questions about dining facilities being open to the general public, whether that would be an allowed use for the zone, whether that's considered an accessory use. And we hope we've been able to address that through the staff report and happy to answer questions pursuant to that. And then the applicant has updated, has provided updated management plans and parking plans. And then the applicant has updated, has provided updated management plans and parking plans. And as mentioned, according to the applicant, they're looking to expand the use to allow overnight guests to invite or host non-resident guests for these dining for small gatherings. And so the definitions that are included in the draft final action letter that have been proposed by the applicants are important for understanding the proposed scope of use of the property and what appropriate conditions of approval to mitigate those impacts might be. So these are the original definitions provided by the applicant for overnight guests and non-resident guests. Non-resident guests, as noted, includes guests of overnight guests or guests using the dining facilities and those who could just generally come to use this. And as we've stated in the staff report and the draft final action letter, we are recommending that the, that definition be amended to be more specific that non-resident guests are the guests of guests. And my understanding is that the applicant has agreed to this modified definition. And we've also put together a fairly comprehensive list of conditions of approval, attempting to mitigate the proposed use of the hotel. And this is forty odd conditions of approval, and so if planning commission does see fit to approve this conditional use permit, we do want to make sure that we get these conditions of approval right. And that we will then need an updated management plan from the applicant that accurately reflects the conditions of approval that are adopted. And my understanding is that the applicant has agreed to these conditions of approval with two modifications, and I can let them address them for conditions of approval nineteen and forty-one. We've received a number of public comments since November from neighbors and representatives of the neighbors of the hotel, and the concerns are ranging. Neighbors who've experienced a gradual but consistent expansion of use of the property, noting that it is in this historic fabric of old town where lots are fairly close to each other, neighbors are fairly close to each other, and questioning whether the proposed use can adequately be mitigated. So for tonight, as outlined in the staff report, we are recommending that the commission review the applicant's updated request for a minor hotel conditional use permit, conduct a public hearing, and then take one of three actions, either approve the conditional use permit with limited scope proposed by staff, approve the conditional use permit with limited scope, and then add conditions of approval, or to deny the C U P and then direct staff to make findings for denial. With that, I think I can turn it over to applicant representative Wade Budge for his brief presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, planning commissioners, and thank you, staff. Appreciate all of you spending as much time as you have on this application. Appreciate the careful preparation of the staff with respect to the staff report and providing and communicating to us items and ways to improve our application. My name is Wade Budge, and it's an honor to be representing the Washington Schoolhouse. This is a fantastic asset in your, in your community. To think that we have a hotel of this class in a historic building built in eighteen eighty-nine, operating and, and providing services to such a varied clientele is something that I think is a real asset in this community. And what we're here to, to do tonight is to follow up on what I explained in our November meeting, which is to facilitate the kind of use that our guests expect. As I mentioned in our November meeting, this, the clientele who comes to this hotel are used to the kind of experience that they get in a number of other hotels of this type. And what that means is that in the dining room, they're allowed to bring guests to the dining room. That's a model that's tried and true, nationwide, it's international, and it's what's expected, but when our guests come and experience the great cuisine and the great accommodations that are offered at the Washington Schoolhouse. I had hoped that we wouldn't have to go over some of the points that we went over in our November meeting, but since last week, or since our meeting two weeks ago, there have been a number of false statements in the press that have necessitated me recovering some ground. I think faults would be the light way to describe it, but as a result, I just want to go ahead and just cover some ground. I apologize for the redundancy, but I think it's important that we understand the framework. And, and so from that point, I'd like, if you could move to the first slide, the next slide. And the next one. So, as I mentioned in November, the decision about whether a hotel was appropriate in this district was decided long ago by the city council, those who are elected and have the authority to choose whether this is an appropriate use in the zoning district. And the H R one district, as show, as is shown, is identified as the area where you can have a hotel minor. There's a condition, and we put it up there, S F O six has to be in a historic structure, which we clearly are. So this isn't a slippery slope. There isn't a slippery slope argument. There aren't, and there isn't the ability to turn in hotel, you know, turn every building into a hotel minor in the zoning district. But what there is, is there is the legislative judgment by the council to say that this is an appropriate use. And in Utah, as was said in the prior application, the standard is that if it's a conditional use, it shall be approved. Now, my client has engaged in a lot of interaction with the neighbors back in October and November, and despite not being required to do so, has made a number of changes since the application we presented you in November. These are not required by the code. These are not required by law. These are required because my client values community and being, understanding and reacting to those who are their neighbors. So could you go to the next slide? We'll go to the next one, just in interest of time. What we've done is we've done a series of modifications, which I've summarized on this slide, and this is in direct response to the comments we got from the neighbors in their meetings. And one of the significant ones is that we've narrowed the C U to only allow non-resident guests, guests of guests, occasional access to the indoor dining facility. You'll recall, when we were here in November, we were talking about having non-resident guests be outside. We were talking about events. We were talking about what else we could use. Because when you see the definition of what is a hotel minor, it includes a lot of different things. But what we heard from both comments made in public in this meeting, but also in our discussions, our client had more than an hour-long call with about thirty, I don't know how many participants, but I wasn't on it, but over, over fifteen participants. What they heard is they, the walls are so thick at the Washington Schoolhouse. They're not concerned about what goes on inside. What they want to make sure is that the outdoor area doesn't turn into some sort of event space. So if you look at what these changes are, the first one is we narrowed it, the use to, to non-resident guests, guests of guests. We've updated the project description. We've defined what are the guests. We've established the seating capacity, which is something we talked about in November, about how you can have a seating, because there's only so many chairs in the dining area. We've talked about how there are no walk-ins. We've also now said parking is only provided for overnight guests. What does that mean? That means parking is the exact same. And we went ahead and got another study to support our revisions and supplementations that we've made. So the same people who are using the facility to stay there overnight, and which they are few, because very few people who come to our facility actually bring cars. Most are driven. But that's, that will not change. And then we provided further instructions on how guests are to arrive and to accommodate the winter road conditions that were discussed at our last meeting. We clarified that outdoor areas are for the passive use of overnight guests only. So again, it's not active programming. It's not any of those other things that we endeavored to do when we started on this back with Bruce Erickson. This is, we've modified this in response to a community. And we've committed to create a neighborhood coordinator, who, a person who the neighbors could contact, and then we've added a waste management protocol to address the concerns that Mr. Fisher raised. So these are all the condition, these are things that we've imposed on ourselves and, and asked that they be conditions of approval. Is this required? No. Is this is not, this is, if you look at the, as you know, because this commission understands from a conditional use permit, we're only required to mitigate not anything anyone can dream of. We're only required to mitigate in accordance with applicable standards found in the code. There isn't an applicable standard in the code that ties to these conditions that we've imposed on ourselves. But what we're doing in the spirit of recognizing that we're a member of this community and we want this neighborhood to continue to thrive, we've gone ahead and volunteered to have these imposed. And so I want that to be recognized for what it is. Now, if you go to the next slide, I just, I feel that we need to rebut a number of these erroneous things that have happened since our meeting two weeks ago. This patently false statement that if this is approved, we can open a restaurant or a bar, both are false. Why? Well, you can't open a restaurant. What you can have is a dining or restaurant facility as part of a hotel. We went and were explicit in the conditions that no dining use could ever operate independent of the hotel. So for instance, you couldn't just one day close the hotel and just continue the food operation. That would not be allowed. Furthermore, if those who are complaining and claiming that there could be a bar opened, they would need to simply look at the D A B C rules, which prevent a, a, a bar in this location. Those are, those may, those rules actually may make the zoning process here of the city seem a little bit simple. Okay, so navigating the alcohol rules. Number two, that this will allow gas, guest parking on Park Avenue and delivery truck on Woodside. That's not true. In twenty-ten, we applied and obtained a separate conditional use permit that was amended in twenty-twelve that allows for the pool maintenance facility to go onto Woodside. But it does not allow guest parking on Woodside, and we're not changing that. We're not changing anything relative to parking. And the existing parking we have are the eleven spots that are described in the, in the staff report and in our, in our, in our parking analysis and in our traffic study. Next, there's even an, an item in the application that would allow outdoor events for two hundred and fifty people. That's patently false, not even close to true. We have twelve rooms for our hotel. You, those guests in those twelve rooms can go outside. That is not approaching two hundred and fifty. The next false statement, number four, since restaurants are prohibited in the H R use, that this is, they're, they're insinuating that restaurants is a use that is not, this is, if you go to the next slide for number four. They're insinuating that we're bringing a use that's not contemplated. If you go ahead and look, as, as we said on the very first slide that we've displayed, the H R one zone expressly contemplates the hotel minor use, and the hotel minor definition talks about restaurants and dining in connection with a hotel. Number five, lifting any of the current parking and delivery, delivery prohibitions on Park and Woodside. The opposite, we are not changing anything relative to parking. Number six, we're seeking special event permits for this B M B. We're not seeking any events. In fact, we added a condition that says there are no events. And I'll give you the number, just so everyone can confirm, so. Twenty-two, condition twenty-two. Number seven, a hotel permit and associated uses is a slippery slope that shouldn't be allowed. Now, these are great arguments, and I don't want to belittle them by calling them out in this way. In fact, if I were advising people with these feelings, what I would advise them is those are the exact kind of arguments you present to a city council or to a planning commission. A planning commission when they're sitting as a recommending body or a city council when they're sitting as a deciding body relative to what are the uses for a zoning district. In fact, if the neighbors feel this intense about this, they should go and seek a down zone or a text amendment that would change the approved uses in the H R one zone. But in Utah, we, as an applicant with a filed application, aren't subject to any subsequent change. And as a result, we're not opposing any effort by the neighbors to go and change what would be allowed in the H R one, but we're entitled to proceed with the application and the use that's been described and that we relied on in bringing this application. So. I do want to just note, we'll just go ahead and skip. I don't think, if the planning commission has any questions on the site, I have three slides that talk about the site, and we can spend as much time as we want, but I think from our prior meeting, we're all familiar with the site. Maybe, Bron, if you could just go three more slides forward. We know that location. Bron's already covered that. One more. That helps indicate and show where the hotel entrance is currently and where it will remain. The fortunate thing is nothing in this approval will change or result in any construction of any type. We won't be doing anything differently other than the way we operate and apply, and abiding by new conditions that we've, I just previously discussed. Now, I do want to spend one more moment before I stop and allow for the public comment. And that is, there is, we have sought relief from the requirement to build a second parking spot. I mean, a second, excuse me, it would be the twelfth parking spot. And as you can tell from the site plan, that parking spot would be up on Woodside. There are a number of reasons why we don't think it's needed. One, because we are never, we are never underparked. We've been operating this now successfully for well over a decade. We've never run out of parking. Our guests, why, as I say, mostly arrive by transport, and our traffic study supports what we're saying. But we have agreed as a condition, and this was recommended by staff, and we, we saw the wisdom of it, to monitor the situation for a year. And then to come back to this commission to determine whether things have been working as, as we anticipated, as our, and as our traffic study has indicated. And if they are, then to not have that requirement to build that spot imposed upon us. If in fact, though, it is required, then we would build it at that time. So with that presentation, I just want to spend a moment on the two modifications we would ask, that be me tonight, to the proposed conditions, and they are to numbers nineteen and forty-one. And if you could go to the last slide, I'll just touch on those very shortly. Nineteen, we think that the wording is better if it reads, if the minor hotel is at capacity for overnight guests and guests of overnight guests, then no non-resident guest reservations will be accepted. Now, the reason that that's important is because where, if we are full for our hotel, we still have room in our dining room, because not everyone eats there every night. And so one of our purposes is to facilitate that use. So we think that that can, that clarification is helpful. The other thing that we wanted to make clear is that on forty-one, as I just mentioned, if it is determined by this body that we need to have that parking spot installed, then at that point, it makes sense to combine the lot, but not until then. The only other thing would be, and, and as shown on the screen, it's, it's, there's, it's missing two points of punctuation. There should be in a positive there, but the way it would read is this. I'm just going to read the added language that is underlined. It says lot of record, comma, but only if owner develops, comma, or is required to develop, comma, the twelfth parking space. With those two changes, we believe the conditions will be accurate. They more than adequately mitigate for any detrimental impacts. They meet and address each and every one of the criteria, and we really appreciate the exhaustive effort of the staff in really putting us to our test. We didn't get any passes here. We didn't get any, like, you may go past jail and get to go. We had to go through every step multiple times, and so we, we think that with these two changes, we have reached the appropriate result, and I really appreciate the time of the planning commission tonight. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any initial input before I open it up for public hearing? All right, then we will, we'll go straight into the public hearing. Or the public comment, I should say. Can raise your hand on Zoom, or you can come up to the podium. Welcome, Mr. Forge.
Thank you. Good to see you all again, Commissioners. Sorry for the late night, but it's nice to be here again in person. For the record, my name is Nikki DeForge, and I'm here speaking on behalf of over twenty homeowners who live in very close proximity to the Washington School Bed and Breakfast, and I call it the Washington School Bed and Breakfast because contrary to what Mr. Budge is saying, this is not a hotel and should not be referred to such. These residents and neighbors have been and remain very concerned about the pending application to change this bed and breakfast into a hotel, although it may sound, you know, like mere semantics or innocuous on its face, and that has certainly been portrayed that way by the applicant. It is not so. It would open a Pandora's box of new problems for this small residential neighborhood and exacerbate the existing ones. You know, you know the standard well, I think, under the Land Management Code, section fifteen dash one dash ten, as to when you can grant an approval for conditional use permit, and it is not, as was stated just now, that a conditional use, if it's a conditional use, it shall be approved. That ignores the remainder of that Land Management Code provision, which says it shall be approved only if reasonable conditions. only if reasonable conditions can be imposed to substantially mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. So there's a whole bunch that still has to be met before even something that is a conditional use in the zone can be approved. And that's where we run into troubles with this application. I remember at the last work meeting we had in November that Commissioner Phillips said something to the effect of, if we are to approve this conditional use, it will have to be the most strongly conditioned use that the commission has ever approved. And that is not only not remotely what we have here in these proposed conditions, we don't even have appropriate mitigation for this, this change in use. What we have largely under these conditions of approval are provisions that are already required in the land management code in order for this use. So that's not a mitigation. We have conditions that are duplicative of what are already conditions for the existing use and the half the capacity and the much lower impact use of a bed and breakfast. So that's not a mitigation. We have duplicative conditions of what already exists that is not being complied with or enforced. So those aren't mitigating conditions. And we have a removal of conditions that are currently in effect to mitigate what we have, obviously not a mitigating use. And we have a bunch of conditions that sound good on paper, but really are not going to be enforced by this applicant and can't be, and really are unenforceable. So those conditions of use just don't meet the land management code requirements for substantial mitigation of reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. And again, it's not, the standard is not, we don't have to anticipate any and everything that may happen. But you, but reasonably anticipated detrimental effects do have to be mitigated, and that's the burden on the applicant. So want to make sure we clearly understand what the actual standard is. The reality here is that there is no viable, practical way to condition this use in order to mitigate the very detrimental effects of the change and no way to enforce the conditions that have been proposed. I, as I kept hearing in the last presentation, there's no teeth here. That is particularly true, given the history of this site, where past conditions have been routinely ignored, unenforced, and often removed after the fact. And all of this has been a source of significant conflict with the owner and the neighbors over the years. So simply adding more unenforceable and unenforced conditions will not do any good, will not mitigate, and will actually reverse or create more problems and more conflict. And imposing new conditions that just reverse the existing conditions that are currently in place, which is the case with many of these proposed conditions, will certainly not mitigate the request to change or satisfy the requirements of the land management code. We've submitted numerous comments that have detailed explanations of the problems with the conditions of approval and the fact that, that we can't adequately mitigate this, this application. I don't have time to go through those here tonight in detail, so I'm just going to hit a few of them. The first one is to mitigate against parking and traffic issues associated with the site. As Mr. Budge pointed out, that the 2015 C U P approval imposed conditions of approval expressly prohibiting any guest employee or delivery traffic or parking on Woodside Avenue with the sole exception of a pool service vehicle. But the applicant now wants to double capacity on the site while decreasing parking. And if the city won't agree to decrease parking, then they say, okay, we can propose, we can build up to four stalls in a new parking lot up on Woodside. And the conditions of approval give the applicant the option to do this. Not that, you know, it has to be even required by the city. It just gives them the option to do this. And in that case, we would have conditions that are precisely the opposite of the existing conditions for the property. We would have parking and traffic on Woodside for guests. So here's an example of where the conditions of approval could actually reverse the existing conditions of approval for the lower impact bed and breakfast. Now, the applicant previously received permission to refurbish this garage on the property based on representations that it would use the garage for additional parking, and instead it chose to use it for laundry. Been approved, we understand that. But if now we lack parking because we didn't use the garage for parking, then we shouldn't be reversing the no parking conditions on Woodside in order to allow them to build a parking lot up there. That's again, a huge step backwards for us. And if what I'm hearing tonight, that the applicant really doesn't want to build it up there, has no intention to build it up there, then let's remove all of those conditions that give them the option to do that. And if they lack parking, then let's have them figure out a different place for parking that we think we actually do need. And another issue is that in response to neighbor concerns about noise and land management code provisions on outdoor events, condition of use thirteen states that only overnight guests may use the outdoor areas at the site. And although such a condition is absolutely necessary, it is purely illusory. There is no way to enforce such a condition and impossible to believe that the applicant would do it. They most certainly won't be wandering around outside at their property, IDing the people who are out there to see if they're guests or guests of guests. They're not going to be locking all the doors tightly, so nobody can go out unless they show their ID. There's just no way to enforce this, and the neighbors can't even enforce this, and the burden of enforcement has really been placed on their shoulders over the years. They won't know whether these are guests or not. And so we will have up to 68 people wandering around outside and no idea about who is who and what is going on. And speaking of capacity, it's currently at thirty-five. And the applicant wants it to be sixty-eight while reducing parking. The proposed conditions of approval would permit precisely that with no mitigation for the increased capacity. And as far as the claim that they never run out of parking, that's, that's simply not true. And if it's true, it's because the people are parking on the streets, as the neighbors will tell you. And it would be true because the applicant has somehow gotten a bunch of resident and guest parking permits that they're handing out that we see all over the, the streets all the time. So if there aren't parking issues, it's because the system is being gamed somewhat and needs to be, again, enforced, but is not being enforced. And there's no reason to believe will be enforced going forward. Condition of approval sixteen states that no private commercial events will be allowed. Yet, as the staff report points out, private events and commercial uses are already prohibited at the site. And that prohibits prohibition is an existing condition of approval. But the applicant advertises and routinely holds such events at the site without recourse, merely imposing a new condition of approval that purports to, purports to prohibit what is already prohibited and not complied with does not count as mitigation. And that's particularly when it's really not enforced anyway. This idea that if, as long as we have a condition of approval that says no events, then there's nothing else in here that allows us to have events. Well, there's language in there about gatherings. We can have small gatherings. Well, isn't that just a euphemism for an event? And again, where we're already having them, even though events are prohibited, really begs the question as to what, what actual mitigation such a condition would allow. And as for the, the, the issue about the, they would be allowed to have events with 250 people. Well, that's based on the recommended conditions of approval that the applicant proposed that said, notwithstanding all of these conditions of approval, we can go and apply for a special event permit, and it will override anything to the contrary. Now, that's not in the current conditions of approval, but that's where that comes from. And a level one special event permit allows guests up to 250. It's not in the current conditions of approval. If that's not what the applicant is intending to do, we're happy to have that removed, and we can move on on that issue. The applicant also seeks, has sought permission to open what would be effectively a public restaurant at the site. I'm happy to hear that they've now agreed to change their proposed definition to make it so it's not just available to anybody in the public who happens to have a reservation. So I won't go into too much detail on that. Only to say that, again, we still have language in there about not just dining, but gatherings that could certainly be construed to allow events of some kind. And those are not allowed in the zone. Condition of approval thirty-six states that if more than six employees will be on site, each employee in excess of six must arrive by walking, active transportation, or using public transport port. But the 2015 C U P prohibits all employee parking. So again, this condition of approval would mitigate nothing and actually reverse the conditions that are currently in place as far as employee parking goes. And then finally, there are a number of references to this management plan within the conditions of approval. But there's a lot in the management plan that isn't acceptable under the conditions of approval. At the very least, we need to have some statement in there that says to the extent that there are conflicts that the conditions of approval trump, but it would be better to simply see what in the management plan is acceptable and, and pull that in. So in short, the proposed conditions of approval do not mitigate the detrimental effects of the requested conditional use. They either remove existing conditions that were in place to mitigate existing detrimental effects, are duplicative of existing conditions that are ignored or enforced, or are merely feel-good measures that sound good on paper, but would be unenforceable in the real world. The reality is that the proposed conditional use cannot be conditioned or substantially mitigated, given the circumstances. And the land management code, section fifteen, one, ten, therefore requires the application be denied. Thank you, commissioners.
All right. We have a hand, go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners. My name's John Plunkett. My wife, Barbara Kour, and I've lived here in Park City on Park Avenue for 30 years at five, five, seven Park Avenue. We live in the house there, and then we work in another house behind it on Woodside. And our backyard is, is next to the Washington School. Also, as full-time residents, we represent our, our neighbors who are 22 homeowners in and around the, the immediate area of the Washington School. There's a couple that are further away, but most of them are, are quite close. I'm going to add something to what I was planning to say, since Mr. Budge brought up the plat amendment and that he wanted to change the language for it. His suggestion that the plat amendment should only be made in order for them to build a parking lot, lot is a bad idea. And it's basically prohibited by the current existing prohibition on parking of guests or employee or delivery vehicles on Woodside Avenue. Instead, I would propose language that the staff has in condition number thirty-nine, where they say that the plat amendment should be done to, quote, separate the Washington School Inn from adjacent land uses. That would be a very good reason to do that plat amendment. In fact, the only way for a guest to get from the front of the hotel, bed and breakfast to the rear is through that platted lot. And the fence that is supposed to be around the swimming pool was moved out to the edge of that lot. So it would be good to bring that lot into the bed and breakfast property. I do want to thank commissioners and the staff for all the time that's been put in to this and all, and all these other projects that you have to deal with. We were glad to see in this report that the staff highlighted new H R one restrictions on private events, restaurants, commercial uses being prohibited, special events prohibited if proposed, quote, solely to avoid more restrictive general zoning, unquote. Those to us are some of the items that are good reasons for denial. The staff report also says that the school complies with the general plan. And it, it does comply with a number of items in the general plan. But there's one in particular that's quite important to us in the H R one. Under community character, the policy for historic core says, quote, "A work to ensure the continued livability of residential areas around the historic core." It's, it's just hard for us to see how enlarging the school's use from lodging for 30 people to dining for 60 is going to improve our residential area, especially its livability. And especially perhaps as it relates to these parking problems. We did have one meeting with the owner of the Washington School. We zoomed for about an hour last October with 14 homeowners. That is the only contact we had with the, with the Washington School up until, I think it was two, two days before that previous hearing, when, when they gave, I think they gave us a copy of what the, what the staff report was that came out the next day. But there was actually no back and forth conversation during the past seven months. Anyway, we had this Zoom, and we asked the owner, Mr. Holtis, you know, how will this C U P benefit homeowners in the H R one? And his answer, if you can believe it, was improved property values. Well, while that might be true, probably would be true for the school, it begs the question, do vested property rights of one commercial property owner who has a conditional use in a residential zone, does that really outweigh the combined rights of all the, the people who own homes in, in the residential zone? Our land management code on vesting reads that an applicant is entitled to a review and an approval, just as Mr. Budge says, unless, unless the land use authority finds that a compelling, countervailing public interest would be jeopardized. On behalf of our neighbors in H R one, we'd like to emphasize that we, we do feel that our, the public interest would be jeopardized. And we thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. I will offer the briefest of comments now, and I'm actually going to apologize and excuse myself immediately after I do. I am super jet lagged and now falling asleep in chambers. I live on Park, Angela Moscata, for the record. I live on Park Ave and walk my dog four times a day at least past the Washington Schoolhouse and walk many other times as well. I don't know if it helps anyone, but I have lots and lots of photos of cars parked, cars idling. They're, you know, high-end black cars and shuttle vehicles outside of Washington Schoolhouse. I think it's a beautiful property. I do think it's a lovely addition to the neighborhood, but I don't think it's anything that needs to be expanded, especially to make room for additional guests. The reason I have all of these photos is because last year there was a, or over the winter, there was contemplation for a pilot program to make Park Avenue two ways. And so I ended up documenting the myriad issues up and down Park Ave throughout various times of day and times of the year. That's why I have all these photos, and it just happens to be an incredibly problematic spot. And yeah, I, I just worry about making that worse. So, so I would be in opposition to this. Thank you.
I feel like saying good morning instead of good evening. My name is Kirsten Stouffer-Erick, and I am the neighbor adjacent to the Washington Schoolhouse Inn at five, five, three Park Avenue. It would be hard to find another neighborhood with the charm of Old Town. I think we would all agree with the homes nestled together. One of my neighbors likens it to the rooftops of Paris or the Manhattan of Park City. We're so lucky to have this historic neighborhood. I'm here tonight not because I'm opposed to business or growth. It's been amazing to watch Park City blossom over the years. But to me, this is just the wrong place for a hotel, and in this idyllic neighborhood, we will pay the price. I'm opposed to this status change for many reasons, but two hit home quite literally for me. One, the quality of my home would like very directly be impacted by larger and/or even just more events. My bedroom headboard is mere feet from their open event space. And I could practically reach out and shake the hands of people attending their events out of my office window. We are that close to their property. And as we've heard tonight, traffic in town is a critical issue, not just with this topic. And, but on a century-old side street that is one-way for half of the year, traffic is absolutely maxed out. If you ask anyone on that street, it's just a, and, and you drive it any type, time of day, it's a critical issue. So if any of their services were to increase to any degree, deliveries, garbage, laundry, caterers, not to mention customers and guests, there's just nowhere to go for them other than to block the side streets and block our driveways. And that is such a frustrating, it's minute, but it's a very frustrating experience to not be able to get in your own home. I'm here tonight, though, not just for me. This is a tiny little street in a tiny neighborhood that is strained as things are. For our quality of life in this little gem of a neighborhood, please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one hand raised on Zoom. Clayton, if you could state your full name for the record, please. You're promoted, Clayton, so you can unmute.
Okay, I've got it. Thank you. Many thanks to the Commissioners there. You guys are doing yeoman's work, and thank you very much for hearing this this evening. My name Clayton McNeil. I live at five four three Woodside within approximately one hundred and twenty-five feet of the northwest corner of the Washington Schoolhouse property. Been a resident here for eighteen years and chose this neighborhood due to its unique, quiet character and close proximity to a vibrant town center with all of its benefits. HR1 Zone Designation defines the expectations, I think, of all of our neighbors. Expectations of quiet enjoyment of our residential neighborhood. I think Nicole's letter or Nikki's letter to the Commission of yesterday and her statements tonight accurately summarize the points of law and the opinion of the staff report for your decision. I think you have a monumental decision on your hands here, perhaps more consequential to Park City and its future than Vale's CapEx program. In fact, allowing the change to a hotel minor in this instance not only will severely and negatively impact our neighborhood, it will establish a dangerous precedent. In fact, I disagree with Mr. Fudge, a slippery slope that will allow commercial creep into other neighborhoods forever changing the character of Park City to the detriment of all Park City residents and our quality of life. The Treasure Hill Bond Initiative, I think, was a successful example of what and an indication of how our community feels about the prospect of commercial creep and its effect on our neighborhoods. Obviously, I recommend denial of the Washington Schoolhouse CUP application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Close the public hearing. I'm not seeing anyone else. We do have one more. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Michael Kirby. I live in the one hundred block of Park Avenue there across from the oldest Catholic church in Utah. And I would just like to join the five speakers before me in opposing the proposed expansion of use of the Washington School Inn. While I have stayed there at the end, in fact, to be a delightful experience and have recommended it many times to friends, I think that there is something at issue here that is in the greater public good. It is really hard to replace. When I think about Park City, we have no shortage of hotels and restaurants. But we do have something really dear there that this planning commission has worked for decades with homeowners to create, and that's the second half of the pedestrian experience. It begins as visitors to Park City walk up Main Street through our commercial district and then turn the corner, take a view of that oldest Catholic church, and then begin their walk down the residential neighborhood. And to be sure, the Washington School Inn is one of the anchor buildings in that architectural experience. But I think that that proposed expansion of use makes such a big anchor that it would bring down the rest of the neighborhood around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Do you, yeah, I'll give the applicant opportunity to respond.
I appreciate the comments and I appreciate the attention and the love that the community shows for the neighborhood. That's a positive, obviously, for all of us, including my client, who owns a significant piece of the neighborhood. I just want to emphasize two, well, a handful of points and rebut and clarify a few items. The community needs to understand this, and that is, in Utah, a property owner, if something is listed as a conditional use, is entitled to that approval. We did that with Thirty Sampson. The ombudsman proved that. We've done it with numerous properties on Daly and others. And if there are members of the community sitting behind me or elsewhere online who think that showing up and just opposing at a conditional use permit hearing, they can stop a conditional use permit, that's not the standard. In Utah, it's different. In California and other states where you don't have a vested right state, you can pursue that way. And the reason I make this point is not to be smug or to be any kind of, any like that. If there's a concern that there's a slippery slope, this bought, this community can reach out and say, I want a text amendment. I do not want this in this zoning district, and that is entirely appropriate, and we may even join in. But if you're sitting where we're sitting, which is we're a property owner with an existing use, and we're looking at the use table for our zoning district, and it identifies a conditional use permit standard, or it identifies our use as a hotel minor as a conditional use in a historic building, we check those boxes. Then we go to the next level, and we look at what are the criteria? We more than check each and every one of those criteria, and the staff report goes through that with great detail. And so what I'm emphasizing here is if there's an idea in the minds of community members, the way to preserve that is to make sure that the use tables are appropriately sized, appropriately described, and are appropriate for the neighborhood. We, however, can't bear the brunt of that because we, if there's a change at heart or desire for that to be different. Now, we haven't been cavalering in any way. I heard, and so did my client, what Chair Phillips inter, instead, at the meeting on November tenth. And same with the other Commissioners, and that is why we made a complete change in our application. We took some time. We made significant modifications to reflect that. Now, Ms. DeForge indicated that the standard in substantial mitigation, that's not the standard. The state law is very clear. It says, "A land use authority," that's the planning commission, "shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects." There has not even been a close to a showing that nothing can be proposed to mitigate anything identified or described in the code. There's no evidence of a, that we are underparked. There's no evidence that we have created traffic problems. There's no evidence that we will create traffic problems. To the contrary, we've submitted parking and traffic reports. So while they're asking for a different result, they have submitted no evidence. We are fine. If you want us to remove all the conditions relative to that parking spot up on Park, we're fine with that. We were sensitive to the fact that people wouldn't want a spot up on Park, and that's why we worked with staff to find a way so that we could have a year-long period. And we're fine continuing that the way it's outlined in the conditions. As for whether there's going to be sixty-eight people wandering around outside, a couple of things we need to keep in mind. First of all, the fire capacity for this property is actually over eighty, but we've decided in conjunction with, in hearing all these comments, to reduce everything down to sixty-eight. Furthermore, you can't have those who are not resident guests outside, other than to be coming into the schoolhouse under the conditions as indicated. There was an insinuation that there are breaches or violations, but there is absolutely no evidence of any code enforcement or any violation. This is a business that has run well, can and has continued to run well, and will continue to run well into the future. We have a clientele that's too sophisticated for us to be loose when it comes to items like that. This isn't a three-hundred-unit Marriott. It's not as though we don't know who are our guests, and the gates are locked. So that is something that I think is important to indicate. There are no special events, and the reason there are no special events is not only because we put it in there as a condition, it's because they're not allowed in the zoning district. So there's no two-hundred-and-fifty percent risk here. We have adequately described what is the box in which we will operate, and we have made sure that with the conditions as described in the staff report, that all of those sides are covered, that this is the most conditioned CUP, as was indicated in November. And then finally, we made all of these changes and then present a summary to the opponents on May seventeenth. So this was before the last hearing that we had and two weeks ago. Yet their comments continue to talk, and so they're talking about the application from November tenth. So I just want to, in closing, say, we value the community's input. We've reacted to it with what we've done. We will continue to be good neighbors. We will have our neighborhood coordinator there, and I just want to remind those who might be listening online that in that October meeting that lasted for over an hour, that Mr. Plunkett indicated, there was more than one person who said, I'd sure like to eat there. And we were, our response, I wasn't there, but the response of my clients was, well, if you're a guest, you can. Otherwise, when we change this, you can come. So when you approve this, we're happy to have any one of you go over. I'm happy to invite you over. You can come over and have a meal. It's a fantastic place. It has great dining services, and it will really improve what is offered in your community, and I really appreciate your time and I'm happy to answer any questions from this commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Turn, the mic goes off. I I did say that this would need to be conditioned, and you acknowledged that. I do think that the applicant has done a significant amount above and beyond what we would normally see. And so I my understanding is the way you're reading the code and a conditional use is correct in that it's been determined that this is a use in a zone, and it needs to be mitigated. That decision was determined, and so I do agree with much of what you said in regards to your view on the position of the application. And I would say that I would be concerned that, you know, I see a lot of concessions. I think there's been a lot of movement from the applicant to get to this point because they are working hard to get to an approval. And I would, I would caution that if we push too far, this could go in a very bad direction for the neighborhood, much worse than what is being presented today. And so I just, I do worry that if we don't find a way to work together that the community and the nearby residents do understand that this is it is, it is a use that is allowed in that, in that zone. And so we are, we are trying to work with that. I don't know. I don't have much more to add other than just kind of that that caution to air to the neighborhood of denying it at all costs because that's not the way that the the code and the Utah State rules are applied. Other than that, I just wanted to make that statement, and I'll turn to the Commissioners for any questions, concerns, and I would say this also to the Commissioners, if we're going to be asking for more information, if some of you know that now, let's get it out and move to continue or whatever it is, but if we're in a place where we can work through this, then let's by all means do that as well. But if you, as a Commissioner, feel like you know, let's push that to the forefront.
Okay, Commissioner, Chairman Phillips, I'll go. So I find that increasing the current use to sixty-eight overnight and non-resident guests is not compatible with the surrounding uses and the old-town residential properties where the Washington School Inn is located. And I think the detrimental impacts of the proposal of the proposed expanded conditional use is not substantially mitigated by the proposal, and that reasonable conditions cannot be imposed adequately mitigate the impact. So I don't find that this application complies with LMC fifteen dash one dash ten D. That's where I am on this. So I would, I intend to move to deny the application and instruct staff to draft conditions of denial. Thanks.
Okay.
I agree a hundred percent with Commissioner Seuss, and the only thing I'll add is that the general plan directs us to protect primary residents. And I find the public interest here as a primary residence neighborhood outweighs issuing the CUP.
Okay. We have Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Johnson.
Do you have?
Commissioner Hall, I would say that, you know, the LMC does direct us that this is zoned for this use, for a conditional use, and so looking at the LMC and our state law direction, if we can reasonably mitigate, then we shall approve. And so I would just be looking at the conditions of approval. But I will let you and Bill talk and give your perspective, overarching perspective first.
Can I, just real quick, I want to ask the applicant a question. So with any of the new public input that you've received, we've received prior to the meeting and tonight, do you have, because I've seen you take the notes, and I've seen you kind of bond in agreement on certain things. Right. Are there more additional things that you've heard tonight that, that you would agree to? That has been proposed, or I'm just trying to see if there's more movement.
Fair question, Chair. Fair question, Chair. And we anticipated that question, and so what we did is we just went and had moved. We didn't do like a Tijuana bizarre. What we're saying instead is we're there. We've moved all the way over. And just to clarify Commissioner Seuss's comment, we are not looking for sixty-eight guests. The max is sixty with no more than eight employees. And so, you know, we're not, we're not from a, and we have a time limit when those non-resident guests can be there, that are in the conditions. Those who will be parking will be the same people that are, have been issued a key and have a room. Those are the people that can park. And then we've even gone well beyond what the requirements of the code are in saying that if you're coming there for a dining experience, there's not a restriction on you parking, but we've got to go ahead and impose that.
Okay.
But I appreciate the question.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Try to be very responsive and just be respectful of everyone's time.
Okay.
And that's why we moved as far as we could.
Okay, okay, that answers my question. Yeah. Commissioner Johnson, do you have anything to add, or I'll turn to any, anyone for any further comment? Where are you at on this? Sorry to put you on the spot. You're the only one left.
I'm just trying to figure out how I want to word it, but I agree with Commissioners Seuss and Commissioner Kenworthy. I think there there'll be detrimental effects to the neighborhood. I don't think it complies with the general plan based off that. I just continue to see property owners asking for an increase in use and reduction in parking, and then I think the mitigation plan to use China Bridge or city structures in order to make it work seem unreasonable. So I'd move to deny the application.
Okay. Before we get a second, I'd like to see if anyone has any further. Was that an actual motion, or you were saying you would? No, I'm not asking, you know, but I do want to just make sure that nobody has any further comments to make before we go right into that, but Kenworthy, anything to add?
Not at all.
Okay. So yeah, if you feel like making a motion, then by all means.
I motion to deny the Washington School unconditional use permit and direct staff to make findings for denial.
Second.
Do we need reasons? So we need to go through what? Mark, can you help me elaborate?
Yeah, senior city marketer, and Bill, if you just extrapolate and expand upon your comments to direct staff so we have an idea of what the draft, so you're on the right track in terms of that was more substantive.
On Seuss's comments, but I didn't have it written down.
No, I think, so what I heard were the parking impacts and the reduction and then the offsite. We're not going to mitigate it, and I think if there's anything more specific to any other impacts that you want staff to identify in any three of the members.
I would, I would add the increase in the current use from thirty overnight guests to sixty overnight and non-residential guests is not compatible with the surrounding uses and the old-town residential properties.
And I would just add that doubling the capacity is not something that can be mitigated within the neighborhood. I think the public comment where somebody is right up against it is you I think the public comment where somebody is right up against it is unique to this neighborhood where there's, I think, a three-foot setback on the property from the property line.
Yeah, I find that no reasonable conditions can be imposed to adequately mitigate the impacts.
Well, you have to define those impacts. That's a conclusion. So for, those are helpful, but and we're talking about, Veron, can you just clarify the the expansion in capacities for dining, not overnight guests, or is it both?
The capacity is increases in dining and gathering, not overnight guests.
Okay, just want to make sure the commission's clear on that. There isn't an expansion in the actual bed and breakfast guests or rooms. We're just talking about the dining by virtue of the two seedings.
It's expanding.
So your impacts analysis should be limited to the parking requirements, that dining and associated impacts, but I
Do I need to restate this?
Okay. My computer died, so I'm trying to get over. Is there any re-motion, Mark, or just?
I'm sorry, I think the motion is fine. I'm just, as you direct staff, or I guess you, yes, I think it would be clear to restate the motion with the express direction of staff of which areas to focus on for the findings, for the adverse impacts that you and Commissioner Seuss and Kenworthy have identified.
Would
And I think the three parking ones that you previously mentioned, you could just say the three parking ones I mentioned in addition to, you know, whatever you heard from Commissioner Seuss and Kenworthy, but make sure it's not misstating what's part of the application.
Okay, so let me try it again. It is 10:45. All right. I motion to deny the conditional use permit application for the Washington School Inn based on because the additional park, the additional use being requested cannot, does not have substantial parking mitigation for the additional use. Will have a detrimental effect on the surrounding neighborhood and and the number of non-resident. Yeah, number of non-residents, yes, thanks. Want to give me a copy too? Okay. We have a motion.
Sorry, yes. Just strike the word substantial because that is not, I don't think you need to make that standard.
Striking substantial.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, motion, can I give a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, motion passes. I didn't hear any opposition.
I realized my mute was not on for deny for.
Do you oppose? Sorry, do you?
Yes, yes, sorry, I oppose. I wasn't, I wasn't terrified. You guys caught that for, I have some mute.
Okay. All right, so the motion passes, and I don't vote, but I will say that had I voted, I would have also opposed, I think. It's zoned for certain things, and I'm concerned that we're kind of overriding our own zoning.
Okay, so just, so we will bring back findings. You will have to approve those for final action. Appeal date will run from that date, not this evening. So those, that will be a final action once you see the proposed findings.
Okay. And we anticipate being able to bring that back on the June 22nd meeting.
But we're not going to have a discussion on the findings, are we?
It's up to you. There's an opportunity, but, you know, hearings closed. It's administrative approval at that point.
Okay, let's see. Where are we at here? So we are.
So there's two items left. There's the Peak CUP, and I also have the Bransford Zone change. I don't want to assume anything, but do you have a, do you have a direction you want to go with this meeting?
I'll turn to the commissioners, I think. Can you give an indication on what to expect on them? And the Peaks is next. Is the Peaks one next?
Peaks is next. Peaks is first, and then Bransford is second.
And they're wanting to see it through? Okay. I personally am, I am. I'll be recusing from the last item, but but I, you know, I'll have to turn to the other commissioners and just make sure that we're in agreement on that. And I don't know, I'm seeing some heads looking down.
Can we just do this one first and see how long it takes?
Who is, who is that?
Commissioner Hall. Yeah, we just see how long this takes. Because we already, this is the one we just had last meeting, right?
Yeah, this was in May. This was like a month ago. Yeah. And I don't, I don't know if I could make a suggestion, and I maybe just to consider, but would it be better to go? I mean, okay, because I know you've got this other meeting for
I know where you're going with this.
And I don't want to take up, you know, too much time, but I don't honestly think this will take too much time, like either here or there.
So where you're going is you're wondering if these can follow suit with the special meeting that we're going to have next week?
Or at least maybe the Peaks on the 15th, maybe Bransford could go to the 22nd.
Okay.
Something like that, or we, or now?
I would, I personally would, and of course, I'm recusing from the second item, but I'll speak to, just overall, I would be in favor of trying to give them the opportunity to join in on that extra meeting that we've added personally so that we can, so that we can give them the proper time without extending it far out and also knowing where we're all at. That's what I would suggest. If you think the applicants would be in agreement with that, then I would ask the commissioners if they would as well.
I would agree with that.
Chair Phillips.
Well, it is notice, so we would have to still allow for public input, right? Because it is notice, so we do have to actually go through, open a public hearing so that, yes, there would be opportunity for that. And is, is the Peaks Hotel in agreement with that as well, would you? Instead of, instead of trying to push through tonight? I don't think it's where we're going to be, I don't think we're going to be productive. So so with that, I think, I think we're all in agreement. The commissioners, though, I want to hear from the commissioners if they think that that is a reasonable solution. It's a great idea. Okay. We're going to be here anyways that night, so. So let's just go ahead and go through the motions then. First item, I'm sorry, I don't have my packet open, and I'm scrambling now. Let's see, where am I? Okay, so on the Peaks Hotel, I'll give you two minutes if you want, and yeah.
This, it's going to be just a CUP for request for temporary structure and also a reduction of parking for the structure and for Sante on the Lawn. And we've looked at this before. The applicant has provided some additional documentation and information. And the, I was just going to say that the action letter is also heavily conditioned to try and review impacts if there are any. And so I would suggest that we open a public hearing and continue to the 15th of June.
Okay. All right. Then we will do just that. I will open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone from the public wishing to speak, knowing that it is going to be continued, but if, if tonight is more appropriate for you, then by all means, step up to the podium or raise your hand. All right, I do have, I have a hand raised, so I see a well, it's kind of one long word, so I'm not even going to try to pronounce it. I know Lisa something. You, you've been promoted, so unmeet yourself. And then you can provide your comments to us.
Great, my name is Lisa McGivney. I am a resident of the Parkview Condos. And I just wanted to speak up and say, I personally think that First Sante on the Lawn has been a great asset to the community. And I hope that with the conditions, the hotel's meeting, that it can continue to be a great meeting place for the neighborhood. I've been a resident for about eight years, 15 years in Park City with two young kids, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. And we really enjoy being the neighbor of Peaks. And we think they've, they've been a great neighbor and have provided a great place for us to meet as a neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you for your comments and seeing, I don't see any other hands raised. So I'll close the public hearing and then turn to the commission for motion to continue to June 15th.
Chair Phillips, I motion to continue 2346 Park Avenue Conditional Use Permit to June 15th, 2022.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Kenworthy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay. Motion passes. All right, and then I'm going to step out and Vice Chair Seuss will conduct the next item.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Bransford Parcels. So do we have Planner Holly?
Yeah, I can just wrap this up too. So the applicant is requesting a zone change from ROS to Recreation Open Space to Estate, requesting one single-family dwelling per parcel. And again, the applicant has brought some additional information. Also, staff has provided some additional recommendations to review, and we're just looking for from, for commission, like additional information from the commission. And so I would recommend that the commission open a public hearing and continue to the 15th of June.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this application, please raise your hand online or step forward in chambers.
Hi there, Doug Ogilvy. If you'd gone to the 22nd, I'd have come back then. Anyway, I've been the, I've been the president of the Empire Pass Master Association for the past 10 years. So I'm quite familiar with the Bransford property and have had good relationships with the Bransford family during that time. I've also spent probably as much time reading the Flagstaff Development Agreement as most people in this town. And I think the proposed use is consistent with what was originally envisioned in the Flagstaff Development Agreement. I think it's compatible with the adjacent community in Red Cloud. Representing the declarant for Empire Pass, we did grant Bransford Land easement rights over both Empire Twisted Branch Road and Red Cloud Trail, conditioned on, you know, the uses being limited to single detached housing or the chapel, something else that had previously been considered. So overall, as I say, I think what the Bransford family is proposing for this property is appropriate, compatible with the community, and I would support it.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioners. With that, I'll close the public hearing unless we have anyone online wishing to make a comment.
It does not appear so.
Yep, okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or comment or a motion to continue to June 15th? Yep.
Chair Seuss, I move that we continue the proposal to rezon parcels PCA-79-B and PCA-79-C to June 15th.
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thanks, guys. Thank you. So I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Okay, everyone, have a good evening.